Conference dialing for Noah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, a long time ago.
Oh.
I'll make sure to. When I'm using the whole name, I drop the hyphen. When I'm not using the whole name, I still have the hyphen.
Oh, okay. I'm the host, right, Michael?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome. This service is provided by FreeConferenceCall.com. Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. You entered two, four, five, six, six, five. If this is correct, press one to re-enter. There is one other participant in the conference. Please announce yourself.
Beverly Hills Unified, Lisa and the board, and Dr. Bregy and the audience.
Greetings, everyone.
Hi, Noah. Thanks for joining us. We had a good night last night, right?
We did.
Thank God. Okay. All right, so, um, what was I gonna say? Noah, you have the budget review in front of you, the preliminary budget?
I have the PowerPoint.
Is that it? That's it?
Yeah, but it's been revised. Let me have.
It's been revised. They're gonna email you the revised one, okay, Noah?
Okay, thank you.
Sure. We got it.
Oh, you're done signing. We can still get started, though.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Who's leading the parade?
I'm just gonna go right into our budget study session with Latonya.
Got it. Um, Noah, um, should we put the microphone over there, or is there one here?
There's one right here.
My apologies. Okay. Yeah, let's put it next to Michael, so Noah can hear, okay? Noah, just let us know if you hear. You're not gonna hear me. It's Latonya talk. Can you hear? Latonya, you wanna say something?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Great.
Thank you.
Good. That's it.
We wanna dim the lights a little bit.
You can turn them off, right?
Well, I know you can't see it this way.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. That's really good. Okay.
So, um, today, we're going to, um, go over, um, the twenty, our current year, twenty seventeen eighteen budget review, and where we are in the development of our eighteen nineteen preliminary budget. It is still definitely something to change before it comes to you for final approval on June nineteenth, but we feel like we have definitely taken a really good stab at it. So, today, we're gonna discuss the development of the estimated actuals, what is different that we did this year than we've done in years past, uh, the changes and adjustments from the second interim, which was the last time you had a formal, um, submittal of the seventeen eighteen budgets to where we are right now in our estimated actuals. This year, I'm doing something a little different. I'm submitting to you the seventeen eighteen school site budgets. And then, as we start working on this every year, uh, I will submit what we, the staffing and the school site budgets for each, each school that we're working with, so we can see how we're changing from year to year, the eighteen nineteen budget assumptions, as well as the multi-year projections for the, uh, next two years. Uh, we're gonna look at the actual trends in budget development, staffing assumptions, STIRS and PIRS contribution, special ed review and trend, summary of all twenty eighteen nineteen and multi-year budget, uh, assumptions. We're going to, of course, look at our revenue expenditure, our revenue and expenditure detail, our reserve detail, OBT detail. Uh, we're gonna talk about the new element, which is the fiscal stability plan that Lake Oak asked us to do and submit with our final budget July second, and then what is next on our agenda as relates to budget management. So, in the development of the estimated actuals, we took extra steps this year that I hadn't taken in prior years. And, and I say in prior years, my, um, history of budget development with, with us is our fifteen sixteen, sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen budgets. And I've talked to you before about how it takes a CBO. By the time I left, um, my last long-term position, you know the budget like the back of your hand, but it takes a minute before you know all of your users, your account strings, and, and things like that. Last year, um, as you recall, I went, we went through every string of budget to see the balance. We dropped it down into the bottom line. What makes this so important is that if you get the estimated actuals wrong, and you're in the middle of budget reductions, or you're in the middle of tense negotiations, you, it gives the impression that you are hiding something, that you don't know what you're doing. And so, it's a, it's a very important figure to come up with, but it is, um, intricate to come up with it when you have such a complex budget as ours. So, uh, my accounting staff met with each department head in, uh, late March, and they talked about reducing budget and asking them to reduce or cancel purchase orders that they weren't going to use. Uh, that's where I felt our flaw was last year. Uh, we worked in, on budget, but once it's in a purchase order, it looks like it's spent. And so, we're thinking that that's money you're gonna spend, once it's been put in a purchase order, and we looked at the account, the money that you had not spent in your budget, but those purchase orders are very critical to developing the estimated actuals number. Um, we did a district budget review. That's that line item review of unexpendative budget authority. For example, if we gave you eighty thousand and you've only used sixty thousand, we dropped that other twenty back to the bottom line. We estimate how much more expenditures you're gonna need, whether it be salary, whether it be an ongoing expense that you do every month, and we tried to really massage the actual budget to figure, and we took, took that money and dropped it to the bottom line. This year, we ask our department heads to review their open purchase orders. Um, we, we have to do a better job at working with our department heads, uh, to explain to them how critical it is that they do this, this, uh, piece for us, 'cause it is very critical to developing the estimated actuals. So, in, in, in development of this, we, we did it ourselves. Uh, we went in and we looked at every open purchase order that had a balance in it over five hundred, over five hundred dollars. So, if you had a purchase order that you set up for a thousand, and you've only used five hundred of it, then we, we printed it off. And, uh, I went through and we had a stack about that big. I can't remember how many it was, but it was huge. And what we did was, we went through, look at those purchase orders and see, and we determined if that purchase order should be closed. I looked at it and saw if it had no activity since December twenty seventeen, that means you weren't gonna use that purchase order anymore. So, I closed it out. So, that means that if the purchase order was set up for fifteen thousand, and you only used five thousand, I closed it out and dropped ten thousand back down to the bottom line. And so, we did that exercise for, I don't know, well over seven hundred POs, uh, district-wide. And it actually, you'll see later on, the result of it. It was a very worthwhile exercise. It took a very long time to do. Um, Dr. Bregy knows, 'cause I was tight about it. My jaws were tight, 'cause it took me so long to do it. But the, next year, what I will do again, we're gonna, we, our, um, our procedure will be, you can't, I'm not, I'm gonna review open purchase orders before you open them, and lock up all that money, because the money is being locked up, and it looks like it's being spent. And, um, we need to make sure that we're locking up close to what we're gonna actually spend, that we put some effort into, um, into, uh, assessing what we're gonna spend in our expenditures. So, the major changes from second interim to the estimated actuals, in property tax revenue, it increased by one point nine million. Uh, we had indication that it would, uh, increase, but we didn't receive the revenue until very late May. It was after May twenty fifth. And we are always reticent to put it in budget until it's actually received. We, um, have other local income, the bankruptcy oil well revenues that the city has, uh, agreed, come to us is over seven hundred thousand. We have minor adjustments in certificated classified salaries. You will see reductions in expenditures. Um, there's an elimination of any, there was no need to transfer any money from Fund Seventeen into the general fund to prop it up as we once, uh, that, as we once, uh, had budgeted in first and second interim. And we also decreased the general fund contribution to cafeteria services. They actually did better than they thought they were gonna do. So, we're really happy about that. The change from the second interim to estimated actuals by the numbers, the detail is here. Um, the actual change, um, I'm gonna just look at the little table that you have off to the side right now. This was in, what was in the second interim budget and expenditures. Budget changes where we had to go in and add money for a, a different reason or the other. So, like, for example, in the oil well, at second interim, I only had eight hundred and seventy-one thousand budgeted, but we had to pay insurance, we had to pay some other vendors, so we had to up that budget authority one point six million. We did reduce POs in that area with special ed. We had budgeted, uh, ten point nine million. We, uh, reduced, uh, budget and we reduced purchase orders in that, um, cost sector, and on and on. So, the, um, net change, if you go to the other side, the net change is three million to the good, um, in our estimated actuals. That we are, oh, um, I, it, it probably will change, but hopefully it won't change, but quite a bit. Uh, but only a small amount from budget and then to budget submittal, then from estimated actuals to unaudited actuals. But we feel, um, again, it was an arduous task. We feel good about it. It, yeah, I told, I was talking to Dr. Bregy. I, you have to know that your, your department's, their behaviors. And it takes a while before you understand the behaviors of the users, how much they're, how much they are using their purchase orders, how much they're not using their purchase orders. Did they say they needed this, and they really didn't need it? And so, that's what you're seeing here in these additional exercises for estimated actuals, is the understanding of, um, our budget users district-wide. So, this is how it looks in summary. This is something you're used to. Excuse me. At second interim, we showed a beginning fund balance of seven point one million. We still show a, um, beginning balance of seven one, seven point one million. In revenues, we showed sixty-six point five million. Now, we show sixty-nine point three million in revenues, and for seventeen eighteen. In expenditures, we remain about the same, sixty-nine point eight million to sixty, sixty-nine point six million. Um, again, you see our, our changes in fund balance are significant. We go from deficit spending of three point five million to deficit spending of four hundred eleven million. I will say that I believe that this trend is.
I'm gonna repeat that number.
Did I say four hundred eleven? What did I say? Four hundred eleven million? I'm sorry, four hundred eleven thousand. Um, I wanna say that this is more in line with what, where we should be. And, and we, we, again, that's why we, we wanna do a, a better job of budget development. If you recall, last year, sixteen seventeen, we ended the year deficit spending a little under a million at eight hundred fifty-five thousand. So, this is, um, this is more in line with where I think the, uh, uh, budget will be. We took these trends and transferred them over into eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. Um, and we hope that the trends hold. And I said, we hope. We'll continue to, to watch this. Like I said, we've, I've developed some procedures that I want us to do mid, uh, at first interim and mid-year with our users, rather than waiting until the end of the year to work with them, that we need to get in with them two or three times a year, because each cost center, especially MNO and special ed, are you, are bigger cost centers, and doing budget management with those. So, as you can see, uh, bottom line, we jumped from nineteen percent in total reserves to twenty-three percent in total reserves for our estimated actuals going into our eighteen nineteen budget year. Site budgets, this is, uh, again, the reason why I include this, it's not just for your knowledge, but also to keep us honest as a, as a district. Are we reviewing our staffing in relation to enrollment? I had saw this model in, at Santa Monica Unified. They actually put their staffing, their budget, and a snapshot of every school um, in the budget presentation through the preliminary budget, and make sure that there is management of staffing at those schools. So, with us, this is our first, your first look at what we budget and sta, what we have budgeted per school. Uh, the, I also included for enrollment, the Davis demographics number, to see if our demographic study is tracking with our actual. So, right, and you'll get this back for you for, um, if not eighteen nineteen budgets submittal, you'll definitely get this, this slide back to you, at, you looking just like this, or with the change numbers for first interim for eighteen nineteen. Right now, district, uh, enrollment, uh, was seven thirty for seventeen eighteen. Davis demographics showed that in eighteen nineteen, we should go to seven forty-eight. And James Hansen, our registrar, district-wide, has our, our enrollment at six hundred and eighty-one for BV right now. El Rodeo, James Hansen has our enrollment at five hundred and eighty.
I'm sorry, can you go back and tell me, you said five eighty-one for BV?
Six eighty-one.
Six eighty-one.
For, for BV.
Right now.
Right now. Um, we spent per, per child, just, just a school site budget, and this is something that we actually have to submit to, um, as part of our budget, how much money is being spent in the, at the school. We have to, and it has to match a certain percentage, and we do fall in line with the percentage requirements by the state. We spent eight thousand three hundred and seventy-three sixty-five budgeted at, spent at El Rodeo for seventeen eighteen. Um, for, I'm sorry, BV. At El Rodeo, uh, James Hansen's number is five hundred and eighty enrolled right now. And, um, total spend for seventeen eighteen is eight thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars per student at El Rodeo.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the per-student number for BV?
At BV, it was eight thousand three hundred and seventy-three. At, uh, at ER, that was the one where the, in the district's enrollment, to date, is five eighty, which is below the Davis demographic number, and you see what the current enrollment was, which was six hundred. For Hawthorne, our current. Oh, I'm sorry.
El Rodeo, the, uh, per-student expenditure again?
Eight thousand five hundred and thirteen.
Thank you.
At Hawthorne, the per-student expenditure is nine thousand four hundred and fourteen. The enrollment is five hundred and sixty-four in the seventeen eighteen school year. Davis demographic has it dropping to five forty-six, and our current district enrollment, based upon James Hansen's numbers, are five hundred and thirty-three for eighteen nineteen. Horace Mann, the per stu, and the per-student amount is nine thousand one hundred and forty-five. And you see, as those enrollment goes down, that's why the per-student is so, is so high, because enrollment is so low.
You basically took the grand total for school, and you just divided it at this point.
Uh, the Davis demographic number for Horace Mann, uh, shows us popping up, and we, we've seen that trend since it's been built out, of five seventy-eight. But the district number for Horace Mann right now is five hundred and eighty-four. So, the Davis demographics track, but at the same directions, but not, um, of course, not on point, but it tells us if we need to get another, how soon we will need to get another demographic study. I didn't have the current, uh, district enrollment for the high school, but this is, uh, their budget, their staffing for seventeen eighteen, and then the Davis demographic number has them dropping considerably.
They're telling you, in each of these, this is a number of students, and it says K-five, uh, teachers, K-five teachers. Are middle school teachers like?
They are. They're considered part of the, the, the K-five staffing ratio.
Oh, really? So, it's really K-eight?
Oh, no, the teachers, I'm sorry. She has it down here.
Just call teachers.
Just call teachers. At the.
Oh, the, uh, the bottom-line teachers with the, uh, middle school?
Thank you.
I assume?
Yes.
I'm curious how significantly our middle school students' expenditure ratio, how significant that is compared to our public.
It's probably huge. It's a great analysis, Jonathan. We should do that for eighteen. We could do that for the nineteenth. When we submit, uh, 'cause we're gonna submit a mini-presentation to you for what changed from here to two weeks from now.
What is it for the high school? Do you know the breakdown of the costs? I know you don't have the enrollment, but did you have the costs?
Um, I didn't break that one down. It's just, it's a divider. Let me do that.
Actually, if you look at anything like, for example, in El Rodeo, it looks like fifteen teachers for six, um, grade years. Fifteen teachers for six grade years. Is that right? Because K through five, that's six grades.
It's nine thousand five hundred and forty-eight. At the high school.
Nine thousand four hundred and forty-eight?
Nine thousand five hundred and forty-eight.
So, what I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What I was saying is that, if, if, if you just take one of them, like El Rodeo, it appears from this that there are eighteen teachers for the middle school, three years. Eighteen teachers for three years. K-five, it shows fifteen teachers for six years.
I don't understand the question.
I don't think you can really, well, what he's, what, what, what Mr. Spitz is trying to ask is, or confirm, is if, under, you're looking at El Rodeo, sorry. Now, you have the teachers.
Where are we? El Rodeo?
Uh-huh. We have eighteen middle school teachers and.
Eighteen middle school teachers, right. So, you divide that, so can you divide that number by three, since it's three different grades? Giving you six teachers or six units? I don't know.
Not really. We could give it, we could give you the data that you want, though. I know exactly, I mean, we have it broken down by grade number of teachers per, I mean, in the middle school, high, at the middle school and the, the K-five. I mean, in ter, in relation to, it's the same thing that Jonathan asked, the middle school teachers in rela, uh, middle school expenditures in relation to middle school students. So, you, you're trying to get the expenditure for the middle school base. Is that correct? So, we could do that for you. So, you can't read this slide, but I included it because it is, um, it is the bane of my existence. This, I lifted this from School Services of California, and, um, it is, the guy down at the bottom is actually, they had a few slides where they actually drew, uh, the late, had a pictorial of the late Ron Bennett, who we all love so famously, and that. These are the things he would say every year. And so, the multi-year projections are required by AB twelve hundred and AB twenty-seven fifty-six. Recognize that multi-year projections are not forecasts. Multi-year projections are projections, not forecasts. Projections are expected to change as various factors change. They are not predictions. Projections are ma, are the mathematical result of today's decisions based upon a given set of assumptions. Forecasts are predictions of the future. There is a higher implied reliability factor than for projections. Projections will change anytime the underlying factors change, therefore, plan to adjust as conditions change. So, I'm exactly wrong right now, but absolutely right. So, I'm exactly wrong, 'cause we know it's gonna change, but I'm absolutely right, based, we're absolutely right, based upon what we know today.
So, this is why we really don't wanna, like, for projections, it's not good practice to go more than three years.
That's why they don't ask you to in the budget. We, we've done it, and we've done it historically, and I think it's why, uh, our perception is off in the marketplace or in the, uh, the court of public opinion, but in, in, by state and lake, uh, state standards, that's why they only ask you to submit a budget for current year.
And two more.
And the two more.
That's even harder than it is. I can't imagine more than two more.
Well, it's hard, it's really hard for us, because as you can see, how getting that additional one point nine million in tax, taxes changed our revenue.
Well, you can't, you can't know the housing market.
Well, no, you, we.
You can't know anything.
We get our number based upon, from, um, Jeffrey Prong's office, and they're still dealing with approximations. It doesn't come in the same. Typically, a regular, a, a, another, uh, K-12 district, your rev, your LCFF number is not gonna change from what is given to you at the beginning of the year, or they know it now, and it's not gonna change. Ours, uh, again, the property tax number is a harder number to, to land on when you're doing the budget in June, or for, for July first, and we know we don't even get the first cert of the, uh, property taxes until late August, early September, the first cert. They, we get another cert in, in late October, a cert in, and I'm saying, I mean certification. We get another cert in February, and we get another cert in May. So, each time, we're massaging the revenue figures, as well as, you know, where we are in expenditures. Um, the next slide, I get, I, it's hard to read, so you have a handout. This is your page number sixteen, but you have a bigger handout in your packet that, um, that is easier to read.
So, I wanna ask you something with the enrollment. I apologize, I had a really important phone call, but, um, like, a while ago, Isabel was saying, there's five hundred and fifty kids at Hawthorne, and then someone said, no, there's six fifty. Well, there's five sixty-four, so she was right mostly. So, how did these numbers?
I think he had the wrong one, but Mr. Waters, we were talking about it at the meeting.
It's not even Mr. Waters. It was like, everyone kept throwing out, you could say, no, it's five fifty, and, and we, and then someone said, six fifty. Maybe it was Mr. Waters.
I, I just, you know, I think he was using numbers.
From a while ago?
He told me, yeah. He was using.
He just didn't know. Okay, so, all right. So, these are, do we think these numbers will stay constant?
You, yeah, no, you missed it.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
We, our current enrollment that we have, on each, um, slide, we included the Davis demographic number.
Okay.
And then I gave the board what we have right now to date. So, for BV, we have six eighty-one to date, where we are right now.
Latonya, before you get off to BV, do you have the actual area?
Latonya, before you get off the BV, do you have the actual area attendance totals for the students, like the students that actually are within that area? From the demogra-, I mean, it's in the demographic.
It's in the demographic, but.
But you didn't put it here?
I didn't put it in here.
Okay.
Would you like to see a comparison of that the next time?
Yeah, it'd be good, thank you.
Okay.
I see, the eighteen nineteen are here, I get it, okay.
And then for El Rodeo, our current eighteen nineteen number is five eighty. For Hawthorne, our current eighteen nineteen number is five thirty-three.
So the Davis demographic is, is not what we're going by, that, not that number, or it's our, we have a different number that's more accurate, Latonya?
So his was, his was a target, I think.
His was a target, okay.
That's a forecast, that's a forecast.
Forecast. Alright, got it.
And these numbers change every day.
They change all the time.
Every day.
Well, now maybe that the bond pass people will come back, we don't know.
Yeah, the hardest part is that people never tell us that they're leaving.
Until the last minute.
Right, and so, so sometimes we count on people coming and then they don't show up.
And then last minute kids show up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, everyone, then I.
What do you think the percentage?
I'm, I'm, my, um, it, my attention is divided, my mother is sick.
Oh boy.
Okay.
Um, okay, we'll make this quick, cause I, you probably need to leave soon.
No, um, my sister-in-law has it, she's just, she wants me to talk to her after.
Okay. Um, what is the fluctuation between what we think, how many kids we think are coming and how many come? I mean, is it a two percent fluctuation, three, four, do we have like an idea of the range?
Um, that, I'm using the Davis demographic number, I don't know the methodology that was used before.
Okay.
When Dr. Teffer was here, uh.
So you're saying for Beverly Vista, the demographic is seven forty-eight for the coming year? For BV.
So are you asking how, how we plan for next year?
Yeah, I mean, like, let's say Isabel, we say it's four thousand, but we know historically there's a ten, you know, there's a five percent swing.
Right.
That's good to know, that typically two hundred plus or minus.
Yeah, I, I, that's a really good question, I, I, I don't know, I don't develop enrollment projections.
You know what I would think would be helpful in the last couple of years, if we could see how many we thought were coming, how many actually came.
Yeah.
We would see if there's some pattern or some trend that we could sort of eyeball. Is that possible, that we would?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Who is, who are we going into?
Yeah, Dr. Teffer, Mr. Hanson.
Doctor Ch-, uh.
Chisholm?
Yeah.
Laura.
Probably right now.
The question is, could we look at the last three, four years, we've been in construction, so it's similar conditions. Where, let's say we thought there were four thousand kids coming to the whole school district and it ended up thirty-nine fourteen or forty-one twelve. Could we see over a period of three or four years, what was the swing, what we thought would happen, what actually happened? It could break down to like a percentage that sort of doesn't fluctuate.
Yeah, we should have the, we should have the final enrollment totals at the beginning of the year that we can go back and look and.
Yeah, and I, also, you know, Laura, when you look at the beginning enrollment, I'd look out that day and thirty days later because you see kids coming and going in those first thirty days, moving in, moving out.
Will be normalization, they have a norm.
They have a, yeah, exactly.
And that's the day you use.
Right. Thank you.
But aren't we also looking at the policy that we have, Dr. Bregy, as far as the cutoff date or um?
We changed it recently.
We changed the date, but I mean, that kind of stipulates where kids are gonna go after a certain date, uh drop date, right? Because you couldn't just continue to offer enrollment at a school on a continuous basis until the beginning of school.
They don't get their homeschools, basically.
Right, so, so it's based on, it, we would ba-, we would, we would be able to project that based on space availability, I think, I'm assuming. Cause you could just look at wherever it was at.
Right, cause we, we have a good idea of like what, like I'm looking at a spreadsheet of projections where I already know where, you know, it, it makes me really nervous when I start looking at.
What, what's available?
Um, sections uh that are already, you know, twenty-three, twenty-three and twenty-three.
Full. Right.
And so I know one more move in or one more, you know, and, and we may not be able to move, you know, we have to look to see if there's another building opening at that grade level, so.
Cause we have a problem. Right. Right.
Right.
Uh, we.
And then you have to decide where.
Right.
Okay. It's pretty hard to staff like this.
It is, it is very hard.
And I'm sure every school has the same condition.
Well, they do.
No one's, we're not different.
You do the, you, you do your analysis and start again like October, you try, you do the, the cohort analysis of where they're going, um. Cohort survival method, which is, is really a role with a, 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 with a percentage factor, a formula factor on there and you try to staff accordingly. The problem is that we are, we're, we're, we're. We've done better about not being so overstaffed, but because of our residence pattern, it's, it's gonna take us a while to get, get normalized. Cause of our resi-, residence patterns versus our attendance pattern is, is, as you can see, we saw the Davis demographic study. Uh, most of the uh children, a, a fair amount, where they live is not where they're going to school.
Right.
So, in terms of staffing changes, uh, in eighteen, seventeen eighteen, the net cost to the uh, uh, change in staffing was thirty-five thousand. The board approved eighteen nineteen staffing changes, eh, uh, total of a, a little, a little, uh, over a million. We uh have a BH funded, BHGF funded staffing of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And we are asking approval um to change the staffing in the business office, this is not in the budget. It would increase the, uh, by thirty-five thousand, that accounting assistant position, we feel like we definitely need more beef in the purchasing. Area with the Measure E contracts and, and contract monitoring. And then we feel like we need another accounting, this accounting assistant is, is not only needed for lots of areas, but one of them will be working on purchase order management.
Yeah.
Why is it only thirty-five thousand swing?
Because of Measure E is picking up some of my.
Oh, I see, so it's.
It's down at the bottom of your, look at the, look at your bigger handout, you have another handout that I think is behind you.
Oh, okay, 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 somewhere. Oh, I see, staffing changes, okay, got it.
Latonya.
Yes.
On the staffing changes sheet.
Yes.
Don't I see an increase of a bit over a million dollars?
Yes. Down, and you look at the black band line, I know, I told her to give you one that you could read a little bit better. But it's, yeah, if you look at the back, black banded lines, the net increase to the general fund is a million fifty-seven.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's in staffing that you have already approved.
Right.
I'm sorry, when you say we've approved that, are you talking about like for next year?
Yeah.
When did we do that?
In different board meetings, different, you've approved the, all of this is stuff that um has occurred in different meetings or different.
Okay, so.
Submit, submittals to you, uh, whether it be um, I mean, if you look at it, it's, all of it should be familiar to you, cause I've, all, you've talked about it all, you've given approval. To add these things.
Um, I see that you have like color coded, is there, is there something, I mean, um, the red and the black?
Well, the red are, is negative. Those are, that's.
Well, you took some out, I'm just, I'm just trying to see, you were trying, you have some on there still, but I mean.
Right, for example, you.
I see the negative, but I mean, other than that, it's.
For example, you had done a board approval to uh actually reduce, a PE teacher and a board approval to reduce a math teacher, but it appears as if we still need those, so. There's something I think on your current board member to rescind that um deletion of those pos-, mm-hmm, of those positions, um.
Yeah, I had asked about that today.
Right.
I think, yeah, so I'm sure Luke probably, I think he responded, but I haven't seen, so that's stacked.
So, are you done, sorry, I was gonna say, the last four items, budget staff proposal, not budgets, so that's for, so it says here vacant the purchasing agent. You need one.
No, um, our current purchasing agent is retiring, so we wanna.
That's Diane.
Right, we wanna change that position from a purchasing agent to a director of purchasing, a higher level position where we can draw a higher level of skill.
Right. Okay.
So, and we talked to um, um, Dawn and Pam and about all of our need, our collective need in this area.
So they would, they would work with you and with Dawn?
Yeah, eh, what, exactly, as it stands now, our purchasing agent currently works with Measure, we handle their contracts, all of that.
Right.
But we feel like we need.
Where do they actually office?
They would be office and fiscal services.
Okay, got it.
It would actually help us reduce some attorney time as well, I mean, I do it a lot, cause I used to be a director of purchasing, so, I jump invol-, I get involved a lot, but where I can't. They're using Terry's office, Axon Anderson.
You're saying if you hire someone who's very competent, we would have less legal time?
Yes, a, a, a higher level skill, we need somebody that actually understands contract management as well. Um, that is understanding of, even though Laco has an audit function for change orders, for PO changes and things like that. If you know somebody, if you have somebody that really understands construction contracts, cause they are very complex, a lot of things we can fix and change at our, our lo-, our district level. That will not make payments delay and things like that, or making sure that we have all the right documents from.
Okay.
Fisc, uh, facilities when we're submitting for payment.
Got it.
There's also a recommendation out of the construction manage, or uh, subcommittee that Mr. Margot and I sit on, and we meet with the staff with Mr. Blake and Dr. Bregy. And uh, with the passage of Measure VH, they anticipate, they anticipate that eh, work in progress at any one time now will be about a hundred million dollars. And that, that's a lot of purchase orders and invoices coming through.
Yeah, we, eh, you'll see, eh, that's exactly it, cause even though our own budget is only uh, uh, uh seventy-one million in expenditures. When you layer the Measure E budget on top of that in terms of.
Well, there's tremendous amount of volume going through your office, so, is this the only people you need?
It is, it is. Well, for.
Besides the assistant, accounting assistant?
For now.
For now.
For now, uh, we, we, Pam Johnson and I, we've talked about maybe adding a full accounting person up there, uh.
Who's up there for the?
The facilities office, uh, where the facilities office is, depending, I mean, now it's, now that, you know, we're still basking in the afterglow of BH.
Yeah.
We need to, we real, we, we really need to figure out um our volume, and like you said.
And you know it's going up significantly.
Oh, no, it's going up significantly, cause.
Well, I think based on projections for construction, it's gonna be about a hundred million dollars at any one time going through that office.
And we could pump on, exactly, and it's better for us to pump on the gas now because we can get, take advantage of the market, um, the, 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 the market as it is right now.
Got it, okay.
I'm sorry, can you, can you tell me the spectrum program teacher, what, when did we approve that or what's that?
That was when BHGF came and they have, they asked to partner with us, right?
Right.
But they're paying for the whole thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what's confusing me, it's like, what is?
Looks like it's in two places. It's in two places.
It's what, that was.
There's special projects, there's new services.
Oh, okay. Aren't they paying for it, they have matching funds?
They are, yeah, they are.
Is it, are they paying for the whole thing or they paying for half of it?
Well, they're, remember.
The whole thing.
They're paying for the whole thing.
They're paying, they have, between a donor and themselves.
Right, it shouldn't be here.
Shouldn't be there.
It shouldn't be in the general fund section.
It should not be here.
No.
It's a staffing thing, but it's not a general.
Right, it's not a general fund staffing, that ninety thousand should come out.
Now, what about, um, I know that the district has spoken about um the, the armed guards. And has that, there been a projection for that or would that be under contract services?
That's not in here.
It's not in here.
Do you want to ask, I'm sorry?
Nothing in here for.
It's not.
Well, I, I wanna, I, I wanna ask if you have it under contractual services or, I just wanna make sure it's not in here.
They're done, we have to think about if we're gonna renew it.
Yeah, it, eh, yeah, it's actually on my, my end of the year slot, you know, what do you want us to do there?
We're gonna have to bring that back to the board and, and closed and discuss it.
I will, yeah.
I wanted to do that.
Yeah, there's nothing in there for it right now, if there's a direction at this study session for us to include.
No, I had told Dr. Bregy, we had discussed this, that at the end of the year, we should bring this back here fairly soon because there's summer school, there's activity at the campuses. As well as to get ready for next year and to bring it to the board with our experts.
But let me ask you this question.
Yeah.
What we're trying to get at today, and if we have to meet again, we're trying to get at our budget for next year.
Yes.
Um, are you suggesting that we're gonna turn in a budget?
Without that?
Without that, uh, and, and that budget is supposed to um.
Be afloat and then later on.
Well, what I, what we can say here today, there's, since we're all here, if we'd like to come back and just have a closed session item about security.
No, but I, I, I'm talking about the specifics.
But I'm saying next week, we can decide where we stand on the issue and then put it in a budget or not. Um, we, we should be able to talk to them about the assessment of how did they do for these three weeks.
Well, for me, I, I, I wanna know what that projection looks like because that means that.
Cause we need to know what, like.
That's what we're discussing today, so, it's, I think it's a big number.
But two things, there's two issues, one, security, which we need to discuss internally to see what we're gonna do if anything. Yeah, and then two, you have until the nineteenth from a business standpoint to finalize that, so we have until the nineteenth to address the security issue.
So we should come back before the nineteenth, folks, to talk about this. And just open up your calendars, let's, you know, it's an hour discussion enclosed.
And then it's an instru-, it's a discussion and an instruction, if I'm direct, we're directed to put money in um, and that would be, wouldn't be staff unless we decided to, however we decided to do it, whether it be staffing. Or contracted services, we would add that as a, a budgetary.
Okay.
You know, item, just a placeholder, similar to how I deal with the oil well, I didn't know what we're gonna be spending money on, but I knew we would be spending like a million dollars on it.
So you would put it aside essentially.
Mm-hmm.
But you got those reimbursements of?
We've gotten, we, yes, we've definitely gotten some and we're expecting more, which we budgeted.
Okay, Dr. Bregy, do you wanna maybe ask the board when they would like to come back to discuss security so that we can know what our budget, if we're gonna go forward?
And we will need to coordinate with the city and the police.
City and the police, um, yeah, NasTech and Chris Hertz and um whoever else is in on this.
And a lot of.
I have a, a meeting next week um with NasTech and Chris Hertz, just to go over the, the, you know, get feedback from the, with the last five weeks.
Well, he sent an email, which I'm sure you saw.
Yeah.
Um, which you can forward to the whole board if you like, I didn't wanna take the liberty of doing that.
Yeah.
Um, where Chris Hertz was, uh, he gave the most glowing remarks to, to NasTech, um.
Okay, so when do you anticipate we can have a meeting?
I'm out of town till Thursday.
Till.
I'm home, I'm home Thursday at noon.
So. So you're talking fifteenth is the first available date.
I could call in.
Is that, okay.
I'm happy to.
Oh, okay, so, is everybody, are my colleagues?
I'd rather be here, but.
Are we all in town in the next two weeks?
Before the nineteenth.
What dates are we talking about?
Well, we have to finalize this fiscal stability plan by the nineteenth, a big component of that, a, a component of that is gonna be security.
It has to be fifteenth, it's the published date.
Okay, so the published date's the fifteenth, so prior to the fifteenth, we need to meet with regard to security to make a final determination on what it's gonna look like next year, if it's, if it's going to be in the budget.
Could we do it the fourteenth in the afternoon, I land at twelve thirty?
Let's see, the fourteenth is uh.
Thursday, no?
Mr. Margot has a concert at six P M, so.
It'd be busy.
Mr. Margot?
Yeah, I'd have to do it in the morning, the fourteenth.
I'm gonna be on an airplane.
Can you do it the day before?
Fourteenth, I would only be in the, available the morning, five, fourteen.
Unless you wanna be on Friday.
Friday I'll do it.
Fifteenth?
Friday, I'm good.
But it has to be published by Friday.
It has to be.
What time Friday?
Well, that's one, mine item.
But I still need to run it. Yeah, this is, it's not an easy, like, she gives, she put it in.
Well, would you do it Friday morning, would you have enough time all day to run it?
So it's not like we can say how much security, we can buy with this much and you run the numbers?
Which we give you during the morning. It's one item.
Right, right, it's not an Excel thing, it's a whole state software thing that.
Oh, okay.
When do you have to submit your budget, I'm sorry?
What time on Friday?
It has to be, the public hearing actually Friday at five.
By?
The fifteenth?
I, I think, I, I must tell you, I think it's a little more complicated than just saying, well, it'd be simple, it's just one item to add or not.
Yeah, it has to be available to the public.
Yeah. It's a projection for.
I think it goes farther than that, because if we're going to add it, we probably have to figure out how to offset, what we're gonna do to offset that additional expense.
But to the ex-, uh, just to the extent we may know what we're doing with respect to security, you know, that's what the first syndrome is for, if, if, you know, if there, if there.
We could add it into the budget eh, after any time it gets set.
I'm just saying, if we be a more involved.
Oh, I, I tend to agree with you on that, I definitely agree with you on that.
So, so, I'm happy to call in, I have a bunch of appointments, but I'm happy to try to call in, it's, I'm just on a different time zone, um.
I, I'd prefer to do it before the fifteenth though.
Yeah, you need some.
Oh, no, we, eh, eh, and, I was gonna say, we can all, I mean, that's what a budget is for, even after July first, I mean, if you guys decide, this is what we wanna do. Then we, I mean, eh, you don't see it in the financial report, but I can tell you what it looks like in the overall budget after July first, you just. in the overall budget after July first. You just, we don't just do, we don't do a final, another, um, formal reporting until.
Let me ask you guys, we're here tomorrow anyway, could we just put it enclosed?
Yeah, but you, we need, we need information.
We're not, we're not gonna, are we gonna be able, they're not having a meeting until next week.
From the city. No, the ci- by the way, the city, guys, I, I think. Right, exactly. Here's the point. I think you want feedback from the people who have been involved in the security. I don't think you're gonna get feedback from the city about the accounting side of it, like, are they willing to pay? I mean, I don't think that's forthcoming.
We would like to know.
I've got really good feedback from the, uh, from the police department, so the people that are the closest to.
Like either the chief or the assistant chief.
Consider coming in tomorrow a little early to do it closed on security. Chris Hertz can come in.
I already have it unclosed. I already have security.
Tomorrow you can't come in early.
We have it closed already.
We have it closed and it's on there.
We have it closed at three.
But are you gonna?
We have it closed at three.
Tomorrow and then.
Security's already on the.
Okay, then, um, then, um, Michael, if we're here from three to five, do we maybe go?
Can I, can I suggest we, we table the calendar discussion until we finish this and we can circle back?
Okay.
What about Friday?
Because we have everybody sitting in.
Friday?
I'm here Friday.
I'm out Friday.
You're out Friday.
Again, can I suggest we table the calendar discussion as the good people in the gallery?
Yeah, okay.
So, um, uh, we would like approval to move forward with the business services staffing proposal, um, like direction.
Um, the total, the total increase that you're suggesting is thirty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
For the year?
Yes.
I have no problem with that. I favor it.
Thank you.
You got one?
I'm looking for collective nods.
You need direction.
And you included those projections already at, on this or?
No, it's not in the budget.
It's not in the budget.
No, it's not, the thirty-five thousand, although.
Making a note of everything that's not in.
Are we all good with this, folks?
What is your indication?
I am.
I am. Okay, Noah, you're good?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Can we pass the collection plate? All right, I'm good with it.
And so, I keep going. These two, your, your next two slides, which are now outdated, but I really wanted to use them because they were so good, were prepared for us by Pars, the people who, um, are handling our O P E P trust. And I say they're outdated because Pers has since this date, and I received these in early May, um, has changed the funding even higher, uh, uh, the percentage increases that we're going to have to fund the retirement and, uh, the retirement, um, rate of the retirement obligation. This is the single most taxing things for public schools right now. The, I mean, the, single most unfunded, uh, taking all of our growth money. Um, in my legislative, uh, hat as chair of the CASBO Legislative Committee, we have asked the legislature, it's in our form two, if they're gonna fund anything, give us money in this area to help offset the costs of the STIRS and PERS instead of giving us money for new, uh, and new, uh, things that we are not doing now. Every school district in California is having to face this burden of this additional cost in STIRS and PERS contributions. The next slide.
Is there anything in the legislature that's even being talked about?
Yeah, there is, uh, there is, and it actually, I, we, we actually have spoken to the, um, the, um, joint senate assembly committee, uh, um, we actually, actually made a call to Bloom's office because he's on that, that subcommittee on this item and additional money for special ed. That is, that made it to the floor, that is part of their proposals and not the governor's proposals, because the governor did not hear us. We, we lobbied, petitioned, we asked him to put this in his, his, um, budget, but instead he put money in LCFF transparency, which, which we think is crazy because we already do the LCAB. He put money in, in more earmarked areas that we just feel, um, are not beneficial to every school district.
Actually helping kids, he's being a bureaucrat.
So the legislative assembly is working on the.
Latanya?
Yes, hon, yes.
Um, what, you said there's an increase in the percentage, what is that increase at least for the three years out, let's say eighteen to twenty-one?
Yeah, um, in Pers, it goes up to eighteen point oh six two. In eighteen nineteen, in nineteen twenty, it goes up to twenty point oh eight. In twenty twenty-one, it goes up to twenty-three point five. At twenty.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's quite accelerated.
It's quite accelerated, and this was just, just voted on, Noah, by the Pers Board in late April, I mean, mid-May. Late April.
This is correctly.
Yeah, just, so with the state, with the state legislature, with the senate, with Ben Allen and Richard Bloom, they're working on a proposal. They're waiting for the new government, governor in five months and hopefully with that next budget, that's being addressed to some extent.
I, yeah.
There's a movement on.
We know Ben Allen knows about it and we know Bloom knows about it, and again, I contacted Bloom on behalf of not just our district, but all schools.
Oh, yeah, it's not just the entire state.
Did he respond?
We, they didn't respond, but I sent a email and called the office.
Well, could we be eligible for that as a basic aid or would that only be for ADA schools? If it went through, because I remember Governor Brown did ten billion dollars, but it was only for ADA schools, so it's not like he hasn't done anything. He has given ten billion dollars for this raise, but well, it's only for ADA schools, so even if something new comes on, is this something that a basic aid school district like Beverly Hills would even benefit from?
That's a, that's a, a, a coin toss. When, when the legislative, legislation is written, we, I'm, I, one of the roles that the, the board allows me to serve on is CASBO Legislative Committee, and this year I'm the chair, which is huge because we have twenty-four thousand members and we are invited to the table to write legislation. And so that's where, that's exactly where it happens, is when that legislative, legislation is written, that it includes all school districts. Similar to how he does the one-time money, that we, all school districts partake. But it is, when it is written, would we get it, we have to be there at the table, making sure that basic aid school districts are a part of, uh.
And, and we are, even this morning, I was at, at a meeting at eight o'clock this morning, um, in Burbank, and we, I mean, we, the basic aid school district superintendents are, we're already starting to get behind this push because we're left out of, of this type of, um, you know, additional funding. So we're already trying to get in front of it.
And, and that's why it's really, that is the exact reason why it's important to just sit on these committees that we sit on because we're such a small part of the population of all schools, but we have the same need as any, as other schools, and so, um.
But we're like the stepchild.
We are. And so this slide that again is antiquated because it doesn't include the increased amounts. But look at this, it shows five point five, then we go from paying five point five million to seven point six minute, million and twenty four twenty-five, and that's all out of the general fund. That's all new, you know, obligation that we're gonna have to pay with no offset, uh, uh, for it. This is a new slide that, um, I included for you all. One of the talks that had been, that has been talked of, uh, hot buzz in the K twelve arena is the percentage of local funds that are being used on special ed. So at first, I had to have Angelie actually explain it to me when they, what was the difference between encroachment and total percentage of local funds? They're actually about the same, but the, this is where, this is one of the, uh, slides, um, Mr. Spitz said is very representative of some of the things that you've been saying. In the, the statewide average of total, uh, special ed costs, the statewide average is sixty-four point four or five percent of general fund or local money goes to pay your sp- your special ed costs. If you look at ours for seventeen eighteen, it's seventy-one point six two percent of our local funds going to pay our special ed costs. And so that is, what that translates in is addition to money that we don't have going into, uh, uh, um, the comprehensive population. When you see that five thousand, uh, the services and, um, profession, the five thousand object skewed up there, that's a direct correlation to this, because those are services uh, that, a lot of that is services that we're, uh, giving towards the special ed population. Um, the seven million, seven point two million are the local dollars that, um, are going into special ed. And this was as of seventeen eighteen, uh, not eighteen nineteen. The, um, uh, the total encroachment into the general fund is, uh, fourteen point five percent. But again, this shows where we are definitely askew from the statewide average of our local dollars not being available for your regular, ordinary textbooks.
Everything.
Paper, toilet paper, all those other things, and that we're, uh, uh, that are going into the special ed, um, uh, services.
So the question is, are we looking internally, and I know we've, we've done it, how are we doing with finding efficiencies and bringing some of the services in-house? Not by eliminating services, but making them more efficient. Is that still being looked at? I know initially when Ms. Chisholm got here, she, she found a number of inefficiencies, let's say to somebody without jeopardizing services. Is that process still continuing?
We're still doing that through some of the S L P work.
Yeah.
And, uh, and it's, it's nice to have some consistent people in, in both of our positions because they haven't been used to that. And so, um, we've been left out of a lot of the conversations, and so now we have more than a voice at the table, and we're shaking things up a little bit so that, um, you know, we can improve the programs that we have here at a cheaper rate and capture some of that money that we haven't been getting, that's been going to Santa Monica, Malibu, and also Culver City. So we're, we're starting to capture more of that than we ever have.
Right, and if I can just piggyback on that as well, um, a couple of things that we're looking at with some of the changes that we're making with the positions that you approved and also being able to take a deeper dive and look at building our programs and making sure that we have the, the things in-house so that we don't have to then send students out of district to receive those services and hire outside agencies to provide those services. So those two things in conjunction, um, will help address this issue.
And when do you think you'd add something back to the board for us to review?
It, it's gonna take some time. It's gonna take at least probably another fiscal year to, to look at it and to, to do the cycle because some of the programs won't even be in place until eighteen nineteen this year.
Thank you.
So in terms of our assumptions, this is some, something that you all ask me about all the time, and I want to make sure that I explain exactly what you have. You have the highlights right here, but this huge handout is everything that we've built into the budget. And you can, if you have an idea, did they put this in the budget, is this in or this, is this out? We changed this as, uh, for first interim, a second interim, but these are all the assumptions that we've, we've, we've built into the budget and our multi-year projections. So for example, property tax, property A V growth, we talked to Jeffrey Prong's office. They're estimating, and it hasn't even been out, it's not even published yet, but they said six percent for this year. Um, we're still, uh, based upon board direction, uh, estimating five percent in the, uh, upcoming years. Um, we're using, uh, what we have in lottery, what we have in, in salaries. As you know, we, we're still budgeting the salary formula. Um, that is what's in here, what we're budgeting for step and column. So your assumption sheet is something, because a- again, we, you can always refer to it, it's always available, but if you want to know what we budgeted for something, it's always in your, the assumption sheets that we include for you. Um, we have, uh, again, for J P A increase, we are budgeting the additional five hundred thousand for eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty. Um, the reduction of the oil well expenses, hopefully they're gone away, and we don't have any, we, you know, uh, the city is, is, uh, putting the bill for most of the costs right now, um, as, as well as what they actually owe us back. Um, the adjusted increases in STIRS and PERS, and then the contracted salary formula are the highlights of items that are in there in the, in the eighteen nineteen budget.
Latanya?
Yes.
The increases in the J P A of five hundred thousand, uh, weren't they also, weren't they already included in the, uh, second interim?
Yeah, they were.
Already included.
Yeah, and, and.
It's not new.
It's not a change.
Yeah, but for the eighteen nineteen budget, it's not a change from second era, but remember, in second interim, we're going over seventeen eighteen and our projections for eighteen nineteen.
Weren't the five hundred thousand?
It was in the, in.
It was already in there.
Yes, it was, so it's not new.
It's not new.
No, but that, the assumption are just the building blocks. So, uh, um, one of the things that I did not highlight on, on your, um, your highlighted sheet, but it's in your, your big sheet, are two percent of salary costs for our O P E P obligation, which was an instruction from the board. So in current year, seventeen eighteen, we're spending eight hundred and ten thousand dollars to go into our, eh, O P E P trust. That's down here. Uh, and.
Does the city do that?
I, I don't know if they do. I know that.
I don't think they do, do they? Not if they, they pay as they go like we used to.
Like we used to. I know that it is, uh, a definite, it's, it's going to, i- in addition to the first eight hundred thousand that you have put away, this eight hundred thousand and the, and, and making a commitment to, uh, fund every year is if we could get a better credit rating when we go for bonds, if there were a better credit rating out there, we're gonna get it because this is very, very good financial management for a school district. Um, um.
So that's one of your points in your draft for the solution then, you put that in there.
I don't think I put it in there, but we can add it.
It's number four. No, you have it here.
Oh.
Continue to read.
Okay.
That's what I'm.
As one of my activities, yes.
Yeah, oh, act, I'm sorry, activities, I don't know what you're calling it.
Yeah, but, uh, uh, but again, it's a, it's, it is, it shows very good financial management. Um, um, and only, uh, I mean, there's, definitely, we're not the first to do it, but we're amongst the elite, uh, handful of school districts that are really looking at this obligation and doing something about it.
There's not many cities or school districts that pre-fund their O P E P liabilities. We're one of the very few districts that do.
And, and.
We're not kicking the can down the road to another school board, you know, to have to pay the liabilities down the road on that.
Well, it also just blows up exponentially, so we're getting out in front of this obligation.
We are, and we're getting better in, interest on it than we could anything. The one thing that you could always, that we, we always should remember, and, um, whoever, you know, is my predecessor or my, who succeeds, my successor in future years, uh, if ever you have a bad year, a really bad year, where the, you know, the creek runs dry and the, the well runs dry and the creek doesn't rise, you can go to that fund and fund your current year obligation. So if you ever got a year where it's like, listen, we're, it's bad, it's very, very bad, and we need that four hundred thousand dollars to fund current year, you can, you are allowed to go into that trust to fund current year obligation.
Yeah. Go into the trust and take it back?
You, it to fund your current year obligation, if.
If you had to.
That's what we have a reserve for.
Uh, but I'm saying, but you, you never.
Things are gonna get pretty bleak if you're going into your O P E P fund.
She's giving you an extreme situation.
Well, I know.
That, that's not your biggest prob, you got bigger problems of that, all right.
I know this, a school district that we both, we all know of in Orange County that went from having wonderful, huge reserves to, uh, uh, identified asbestos contaminated school, and they had to move the entire school in one year by busing and, 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 um, portables. They had no building fund, and it decimated their general fund, where they went from being a very financially well-run school district to almost a state resuscitation in one year from, uh, a hazmat, um, situation. So it can happen, it can happen on things you don't even know it can happen, but I'm just saying, that is always a comfort in knowing that if you had to.
It's there.
That's a lot, that's money that's there that you could use in current year, but it also helps us, uh, uh, in future years, and that's what it's for.
Well, the difference is if you, we don't pre-fund, a few years from now, it'll be two, three, four, five million dollars out of the general fund if we don't start to pre-fund it now.
Ultimately, yes.
Paying a hundred thousand, you're saving future boards, and this district, millions of dollars out of the general, out of the classroom essentially.
Absolutely.
And that's why we're doing it.
So in revenues, um, eighteen nineteen general fund revenues at sixty-nine point nine million, almost seventy million. Uh, property tax or revenue limit is, is our largest portion at fifty-one point seven million. Seventy-four percent of our revenue, revenues come from property taxes. As you can see, we still. As you can see, we still, we have small slivers, very different from other school districts of state and federal uh monies. The local revenue is primarily the JPA and um our our rentals, uh civic center rentals, things like that. At fifteen point two seven million. So that property tax money, as we know, that that we're basically is, hopefully it stays steady and doesn't get volatile. Under um our expenditures, um, we're uh right in line with other school districts in spending a collective eighty-four percent. Of our budget on salaries and benefits. Um, books and supplies are steady at about two percent. Again, I want to say that services and operating uh expense of fourteen percent, nine point six million. Everyone thinks that it's M and O and legal. It's not. It's legal, it's uh special ed contracts, special ed settlements, M and O. Uh, contracts that we have, there's a lot of things that go into that five thousand category, that services and operating operating expenses. That are not just legal. It's quite a few things that go in there. And but that is uh, that's why a percentage seems to be higher. People think we're paying more illegal, but it's not.
And is that where most of those open POs are located?
That was where a large amount of those open POs were located.
So that number was not a true number because it was millions of dollars over the actual number we paid out, spent.
Not millions, just like a.
We dropped it down by about five hundred.
Five hundred.
Five hundred thousand, little, dropped, and that, but we reflect, we're reflecting that in the, in the future budgets. In the projections that, because my feeling now, my gut is telling me after two years that we're over budgeted in that area. And that's not money we're gonna spend.
Okay.
Over budgeted in purchase orders?
Mm-hmm, well, in budget of the, in purchase orders, that we're, we're tying up this money year, year after year and we're not spending it.
Yes, it is. At the end of prior years, when you had open POs, how would they handle it?
Right, you didn't have this practice.
We dropped back down, it dropped down to the bottom line and that, it it, so when you saw the unaudited actuals, which you saw this year. The unaudited actuals from the estimated actuals had a swing of about a million dollars. From estimated to unaudited. Because once we do unaudited, all the open purchase orders have now closed out and that money drops down to the bottom line. And so you saw a swing in the estimated actuals to the unaudited actuals, which is why. What, I think I talked about it at the finance committee, that I was surprised to see that because I thought I had done such a good job. In doing the estimated actuals, looking at the budget line items. I did not know enough about the character of the users to know that we had that much money still tied up in purchase orders. Which is why I commissioned my staff and then ultimately did it, is go in and and really manipulate those open purchase orders. And it's a, it's a weakness for us, that a budget weakness that we had to, we had to address. And that's what we feel like, what I feel like I did, closing the books this year and addressing into future years.
Yeah, a question.
Yes.
On on all those purchase orders that you canceled out, but hadn't been spent.
Yes.
Um, and I noticed that uh, for example, a a very significant amount was in special ed, a half a million dollars almost. Um. Is it? Could any of that be needed in the following year or would that would just go into a new purchase order?
It would go into a, a new purchase or, let's just.
No, I I guess what I'm saying is this, because you're canceling out all of that.
For current year.
Could, could there be a resultant increase in the purchase orders in the following year?
A carryover.
Yes, if we get a big settlement.
Huh?
Yes, if we get a big settlement.
But we won't get a settlement, no, what they're asking, I'm sorry. In my, in the current, in the, in the, in the eighteen nineteen, if open purchase orders were open the same as they were in seventeen eighteen, it would be the same money. And that's what, it, so it would be the ten million nine. I don't think that they need to, ten million nine. I think they need nine five in special ed. And so we'll be reviewing how they open, how they do their open purchase orders, based upon contracts, based upon services, based upon IEP. Same thing with M and O. We'll be looking at, just could, because we, it's a co- it's unfortunately a common school district practice. We use Joe Blow Nursery for whatever. So we do an open purchase order for Joe Blow Nursery or XYZ Arborist. But we only trimmed one tree this year. So we, but we have ten thousand dollars still stuck with that arborist all year long. So it's more of, it's really a deep dive in budget management and budget creation that we're bringing everyone on board. One of the things that Dr. Brady um um instructed me to do was that leadership this year is to go over budget one oh one. The criticalness of these activities to our district leaders. Uh, so that they understand the relation to what it means to the, to the bottom line and from their individual departments and school sites.
Almost from a, like a, just from a zero-based budgeting uh philosophy. Where we're asking them before opening that way, what what is the money going to be used for, you know, ahead of time? Instead of just, you know, just, you know, generalizing about what you'll spend, but getting, having that conversation in the beginning of the year.
I'm just kind of perplexed as to why during the interns, when we approve the first intern, the second intern. Why aren't we as a district looking at those, at the usage or not, or not, or maybe the, just the ability to just look at those uh purchase orders? And see how many of those have been used or not used to its fullest potential and being able to predict how many of those will remain? Or maybe we over budgeted in specific departments.
Um, we will.
Because it seems to me that we're getting it right at the end and that is, you know, um.
Well, I think, I talked about that.
And we're approving it.
Well, and I talked about that when I first started, I'll, we reiterate it. Last year when I did the estimated actuals, I, I'm still getting a feel for our four hundred fifty staff members. Our twenty-five or thirty locations and 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 how they spend money. And so I clearly detected last year when I did the estimated actuals, I left out a big piece. What, what is that? And it was the open purchase orders that in some of my districts, it's not something that needs to be addressed. Because they, they, they track with what you're gonna spend, so you don't have to address them in the, in the districts that I've I've worked in before. So in coming here, yeah, the the main ones were um closed out, big ones. But I literally went through, when you look at the um, the five hundred and thirty-seven thousand of unrestricted. That's in every school site, every department, just hold, this is, I mean, and again, I wish I could show you the picture. The stack of POs was this big, single sheet, where I looked at every one. So what I have to do, and I even taught my staff, how you look at it, look at that activity. Even if the user isn't doing their job, it's our job to do it for them or show them or hold them accountable. One of the things we talked about is if you don't do your job as a department head, then you're not gonna get as much money next year. Because you have a job in budget management that we can't do for you. If you're telling us you're gonna spend this money and you're opening a purchase order for it, we're assuming you're going to spend it. So it's already locked up and that's why we don't know at first interim and second interim unless we do these budget management activities, Isabel. Which we intend to do now. You live, you're, we're learning. I mean, we're like the board, we're collectively growing and. And getting smarter as we go, but we are getting smarter in budget management.
Is there software that could help the departments, especially in that amount where there's so many things going on?
One of the, I think, um, either Howard or Noah asked me about it. And that is why I was not as familiar, because I have been a CBO in Orange County for so long. And they have software, their general ledger software, the users can use. You go in, you look at all your own purchase orders, you can look and see where they are. People's soft is so archaic that our users don't even have the ability to go in. You know, we have to print reports that still don't tell you the activity of the purchase order. So if you, I actually, like I said, I had to go in and print off each single activity to see. Okay, they used it in July, in September, they haven't used it since then, they're not gonna use it.
And that's largely a function of the county office of education. Orange County uses a real-time system, we're using an SAP archaic system, which won't be replaced in Laco with like twenty twenty-one, maybe twenty-two.
Start by January nineteen, twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen is gonna start, but when's it gonna get down to us?
Supposedly twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
That's how far we are.
We're almost there, we're only a decade behind, likely.
And so again, you do have districts that have much better, better real-time management. I mean, that's even down to um our biggest cost center, our salaries. Uh, uh, in in Orange County, their Vitek system, the payroll paycheck comes directly out the line item. That's not how ours does, uh, uh, relational. So it, it is something though that, uh, again, I, it's part of budget, budget management and it's it it because, until we get, maybe in five years. Open purchase orders won't be a problem for us because then our director, our directors and our department uh chairs. And people will understand budget management and open purchase orders. Budget management is also, did we give you too much money that you're not gonna spend? And so we have to go back and and we have to address that, and a lot of that, I have to say, is staffing. Because there are only two people, uh, Angelie and she is a staff member that actually works on budget, but they do a million other things. So by the time you get to budget management, you know, we're talking April. It it is a very comprehensive task.
With these people in that other sheet that you were thinking of hiring, would one of them be able to manage budget management? If not, then does it behoove us to hire someone to do that? Because whatever, I mean, you've, you've got to be able to have not only a good, a clear picture, but you capture money that way.
Um, absolutely. I I, I won't ask you for anything now because I want to see how I integrate this position into fiscal services. But that is, it pays for itself in spades if you have somebody working, like for example, Denise, our our budget coordinator. Her, the part, uh, the large parts of, parts of her day are spent approving PAFs, uh, personal action forms. Taking care of our external accounts, cash clearing accounts and things like that. She would be the one who would do that, but she has zero time to do that because she's doing other tasks. That uh are, in addition to giving people account numbers, because none of them can remember their account numbers. Um, moving money around for them and things like that. Budget management is a very comprehensive task and it, and seventy, I I I would like to say seventy-one million, I think I've talked about this before. Seventy-one million is is akin to a school district that has over eight thousand ADA. We have, if you have eight thousand ADA, you have eight thousand ADA staff. We have a three thousand, we have a four thousand ADA staff.
Latonya, this is, this is a big deal, controlling the purchase order. This is a really big deal.
Yes, it is.
Um, I mean, you, you've got here in total a billion and a half dollars.
That's what I meant.
And that, that's a big deal.
It's a huge deal.
And it's a huge deal and it it just, and I, if I heard you correctly, there are districts that have systems for controlling their purchase orders. In other words, where the purchase orders drop out every.
Quarter.
Month or quarter and how much has been spent and how much is left. And uh, it seems to me that we shouldn't be waiting five years to get this under control. If there, if there's a system that we could.
Employ.
Employ.
Um, absolutely. We can, I mean, I I I, in the middle of budget development, I did, I I, you know, I'm thinking about what we can do differently. But I would like to, let me talk to some of my CBO friends and things like that, because you absolutely, you could say. Um, at the end of every uh quarter, we're closing out all POs and you have to redo them.
For a third or something.
You know, if if you haven't spent more than, if you haven't spent this, if you haven't spent X, it's gonna close and you have to redo it. We can employ all, you know, new policies that help us get this budget management under control. This, and it's a, as you see, it's a large sector and and I felt it very important to not just highlight what we do good, but some things that we need to work on. And this was clearly, clearly an area that we needed to, you know, that needed to be addressed, that we felt, I felt like we addressed it this year. But in the two years uh that I've developed a budget for you before now, it wasn't addressed.
But it also seems to be an issue of over budgeting. It's not just collecting the uh the POs back, but it also maybe perhaps some but, over budgeting in certain areas.
And.
That is contributing to.
It, both, which again, we felt like we've taken a snapshot of the the trend that we we identified in seventeen eighteen. And moved it forward into eighteen nineteen for a, a, a better, um, truer budget.
So you will look into some systems that might be available for us, might be practical for us, purchase.
Absolutely. Either purchase or activities, policies that we will change internally.
These are pretty labor intensive, you know, for the most part. Most other school districts, they just have somebody that has to go through it. And more importantly, you have to have your department uh heads do this and know that there's going to be some sort of retribution if they fail to close out the POs. So other school districts will uh uniformly make sure that they get twenty percent less the following year if they fail to do so. And after two years, they're down forty percent. They don't want that. They actually take the time to do it. This is, it's a time issue. It's a time for them to actually know what they're doing and having the time to do it.
And understanding the importance of it, and that's what I, I.
And understanding its repercussions from the superintendent, the director of business services, if they don't. It's training. It's like anything else, putting wrong policies and procedures in place. And this is what I was, we talked about from the day I got on here, we talked about it when Dr. Brady got, we did it in twenty sixteen, I talked about this when I was board president. Talked about it in those budget sessions when he first got here in February twenty seventeen, when they had those budget sessions, where I said, we're underestimating our revenues.
Yep.
Because it's just a percentage and that we all know because you want to be conservative, I get that. And we're overestimating, or and we're, we're overestimating our revenues because we keep those POs open. So I'm very pleased to see that with about five months left in my term, this district is finally getting to where they need to get to.
Um, one of the things that, and just in thinking about it, a good example is back in the old days, when I first came in oh eight, oh nine. And M and O, they had two clerks. Um, two full-time clerks in M and O. He only has one now. And so, but he's a large, I mean, M and O is a large co- cost center. Uh, we have.
And and as the age, the buildings age, until we can take them offline, they cost more.
Well, they cost.
They're more labor intensive.
They, they, they are, and it's harder to to anticipate how much money we're gonna spend there. And so, I mean, again, this is, it it is, it's an important, important task that is on the radio radar. Again, acknowledging what we did uh this year to try to get a truer estimated actuals number. I won't know until we get the unaudited actuals if I'm good or bad. Uh, uh, but I, I do, like I said, I, I know, I feel that this exercise needed to be done. And again, it is, I'm not gonna say it wasn't labor intensive. I mean, it was, it took four nights until midnight uh working on this. Um, by me, but um it needed to be done. So for our expenditures, we we went over that, the seventy-one point five million. Our reserve for economic uncertainties, um highlighting that. While we're, we're very, our reserves are still, are good, they are decreasing. Thus, the acknowledgement of fiscal stability plan, because we're going for, from um twenty percent exceeding the uh three percent minimum. To fourteen percent exceeding the three percent mi- minimum. I'm on page twenty-three.
And if I can ask, when you say reserve exceeding minimum, what is our ending fund balance for seventeen eighteen? Do you have that?
That's right here.
The ending, the ending.
The actual ending fund balance.
You want the total reserve?
For eighteen?
Not just reserve, the ending fund balance.
The ending fund balance?
It's all cash on hand. That's your, that your unassigned funds, your minimums.
The total including fund seventeen, I think, would be sixteen point three million.
Yeah, we're, we're estimating twenty-three mil- twenty-three percent, I'm sorry. You have it on your. Which page?
We need to just get it to page twenty-three. Um, is your reserve exceeding minimums fourteen point nine or minimums two point one?
So my point is, when we do these sheets, if you could. So my point is, when we do these sheets, I think we put down the ending fund balance as well, be careful so we don't have to
The actual number?
Yeah.
Yeah, I
I think you had something on page
I have it on one of the pages
Oh, the resistance changed, the total changed.
And then I gave you, I gave you the, the actual page itself.
It's seven.
So the ending fund balance would be?
On page eight, it's a
Page eight.
Ten million, three hundred and eighty thousand.
That's fund seventeen.
That's fund seventeen.
We have, the point being is we have fund seventeen, which is our
Plus five, if it totals up to about sixteen three.
Sixteen three.
Yeah.
Totals up to sixteen three.
Yes.
And the unassigned fund balance.
That includes the three percent.
Right.
Which is essentially our entire cash on hand.
Basically, it's not
So my, and my point being is when we do these sheets, I think it'd benefit us to have the ending fund balance listed as well.
Okay.
Does he have, and it's, and it's, what makes up the ending fund balance? What categories?
Um, your uh, all of the, all of the funds that are in reserve for economic uncertainty.
Well, here, if we look at page twenty-three, which you have on there, does the unassigned fund balance make up your ending fund balance?
It does, but it's reserved.
I I understand that, but it's still, but it still makes up your ending fund balance.
Right, your unassigned fund balance, your minimum reserve and your fund seventeen
Right, so that's
Is all of your
Ending fund balance.
Right.
So when you add it all up, it's ten and two and five, that's seventeen, that's, that's six out actually, so that's ten and two and six, that's eighteen plus seven, you know, you're talking seventeen point something.
It's right here.
Yeah, could you, where's right here?
On this sheet.
Uh, what sheet are we looking at?
So if you
Yeah, but I I under, again, I understand that, but you have to go, we have to sit and do the math real quick.
You wanna
And there's big numbers, so my point is, if we could have a line, so it's not just fourteen or sixteen, it's seventeen point something in ending fund balance when we're done.
Right, they're just in different categories, absolutely.
Right, so it's fine, I could add it up and
But we'll add it up for you.
If you would, it just makes it easier so we don't have to do this exercise. I appreciate it, thank you.
So, definitely, when we do this, let's do the income balance. Next slide, the multi-year projections. So in our multi-year projection, we, again, this is the, it by the summary and I've included for you though, what you're custom seeing are my spreadsheets that are laborious and it has all the line items and the the additional years. But for what is required for budget management, I mean, for a um state's middle, um we have our beginning fund balance um decreasing as proportionately to our, our percentage of expenditures, but we have our annual revenues, our annual expenditures. Uh the revenues have that five percent AV growth on there, the expenditures have the salary formula and CPI growth, um our growth that we um anticipated and workers' comp, um property liability, things like that, and then what it looks like and translates out in a projection to the, to the state.
I have, I have a question about the multi-year projections.
Yes, sir.
Um, as you, as you've indicated, you've, you haven't shown us the revenue detail and the expense detail in these multi, in these subsequent two years.
It's, I I I did include it for you, I just didn't include it in the slides.
Pardon me?
It's here, I gave it to you, right up under there, right there.
Yeah, in that sheet.
We got it today.
I gave it to you, but I did not include it in the slide, right, you're, you're missing, it's right there.
This is it, right here.
Yeah.
Right, um, what I, what I'm having a little bit of difficulty with is this, um, three months ago or so, in the second
Interim.
Interim. For the projection for twenty eighteen and nineteen, you showed a, you showed a uh deficit, an operating deficit of little over four million, four million one thirty. Now, you're showing a very big change here from four million one thirty down to one million six fifty-nine. You see that?
Yes.
Um, thank you.
I have, I have no way reconciling that, but actually, when I try to reconcile it, I ask these questions. The um increase in staffing is about a million two eighty. That goes in there, that, that would tend to increase the deficit. You've got a decrease in special ad of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, increase in M and O of a hundred and eighty thousand, I have, those for, for this year, I assume that those will carry
Right.
Over to the next year.
Did you include the increase in property tax on current year, that then takes a six percent AV growth into eighteen nineteen, remember, we had additional property tax revenue?
Yeah, then there's um
Right, but the property
A change in the formula cost for next year of about five hundred and twenty thousand because in the second interim, you had projected two point nine nine percent.
Right.
And that goes up to four point three, so that difference would amount, that percentage difference would amount to a little over a half a million dollars or so. So, what I, what confuses me is the changes that I see going, that will carry forward into two thousand eighteen and nineteen would tend to increase the operating deficit, but you have it
The opposite.
Decreased from four million one to one million six fifty-nine, and I, I can't reconcile it.
So what you're saying is that you would like me to reconcile the projected eighteen nineteen budget to the second interim budget?
Absolutely.
Cause I reconciled estimated to estimated actuals. But I could recommend, I could reconcile that, cause that projection in eighteen nineteen back at second interim has other things in that projection too that are, so I could, that a problem, I can reconcile what I submitted for projection eighteen nineteen at second interim versus what we're doing, cause what, what you're looking at is the eighteen nineteen projection. This is for, from, at second interim.
Eighteen nineteen
This is my eighteen nineteen projection
Yeah.
At, at budget development.
But again, that's just the projection.
But no, I can, there's our problem, I'm good at that.
I have a question as well, once you're done.
We could track, we could track that, the change from those two projections versus those two second interims.
In the
I mean, from the second interim, I'm sorry.
In, in twenty eighteen and nineteen and twenty nineteen and twenty. Because I, I can't reconcile it at all from the, from the data I have.
And Mr. Spence?
That's why I'd asked you, that's why I'd asked you for um that eighteen nineteen
The second interim eighteen nineteen.
That you'd given us, right, but, so I could kinda look at, you know, how, how are we getting to a, reconciling, I, I guess is what I'm saying, and I, I really can't.
And I have a, I think, well, I'm sorry, you
Well, again, I mean, I, I reconcile for you from second interim to estimated actuals, the different changes. So that's where we really
For which year?
For which year, twenty
For seventeen eighteen.
That's right. Now, I'm, I'm trying to see the same thing for eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty.
Cause that's what we're gonna be approving.
You're, exactly. And then we talked about what our building blocks for eighteen nineteen, so we, you're, you're, you're trying to reconcile an eighteen nineteen projection, a second interim eighteen nineteen projection to a current year proj, to our current budget.
To a new budget, right.
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 I don't think we disagree.
Hmm?
I don't think we disagree.
We don't disagree, it's just, we'll do it
It's the data.
It's the data, we'll do it for you, but the projection again is, you, your building block will be your estimated actuals and that is what carries you over into eighteen nineteen with the eighteen nineteen assumptions. But if you wanna see, and remember right here is, remember how you said, we said that, that def, that deficit spending was almost four million back then, but my change in budget in um yeah, my change
Down three million.
Exactly, my change in budget in net fund balance from seventeen eighteen second interim to estimated actuals goes from three point five million to four hundred and eleven thousand.
No, I understand that, but
And that, that would translate
But a big part of it, the thing I, the thing that I, a big part of it, for example, was the, was the added revenue. That was a big, big part of it, it was two million, two million dollars in added revenue. And what I'm saying is you can't carry that forward into the following year.
Well, you, you do, you do.
And, and
Cause some of that is
And the increase in revenue in two thousand seventeen and eighteen is gonna wind up being an increase of about four hundred thousand dollars in the um, in the salary formula cost in eighteen and nineteen.
Well, it does because the percentages grow up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we reflect that in the, in, in the salary increases.
So I'm just saying that I, I understand, I understand that, but I, I just don't, I need to have a reconciliation from four million one thirty um deficit, operating deficit to one million six fifty-nine.
From the second interim production. The second interim deficit was
Sure, from the second interim
Was three point five.
Just three months ago.
And look how many things changed though in that three months.
Right.
And so, uh but we'll get it for you, we'll get it for you before the, not the end of the week, cause tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
But we'll get it for you before the end of next week. And we can actually present it at the, if we have another study session, if you call for that, we can definitely present it or, and we will make sure that you have it because they, it, I mean, we can show how it tracks from there to, to now. And how we reduced expenditures in terms of trend that we didn't have in second interim.
So as I've said for almost five years now, that we underestimate our revenues, overestimate our expenditures, and that we've now proven out. My question, I've asked it a couple times, um I, I would like to, I, I think I know why, but I, I want to confirm this, or I have it confirmed. So, I'm looking at the annual financial reports, the audited actuals for the last couple of years, and they make sense, let's say, I'm just gonna pull a couple of uh years, twenty fourteen fifteen, roughly sixty-two point two million in revenues, sixty point four million expenses, our ending fund balance is fifteen point five, and it went up from the year before fourteen point two. The difference between the revenues and expenses explains the increase in the ending fund balance. Then we have for years fifteen sixteen, this is audited now, sixteen point seven in revenues, sixty-four million, let's say, in expenses. So from uh sixty-five point seven to sixty-four, you had a million something in seventeen point three, it works, again, it increases in the ending fund balance. You could go back and look at the sheet, I think I provided this and you have the sheet as well. Then in twenty sixteen seventeen, we have revenues of sixty-eight point one, expenses of sixty-eight, there's about ninety-two thousand to the good, and if you go from seventeen point three to seventeen point four, it's a ninety-two thousand, it makes sense, ending fund balance increases. So my question is, and uh for the, what you're calling right now, at this point in time today, the unaudited estimates, that's a fair, that's a fair characterization of where we're at today, and you're showing revenues of sixty-nine point four, let's say, three five nine, sixty-nine point four, and you're showing expenses of sixty-nine point six, so that's roughly, Dr. Braggie, what's that, about nine, sixty-nine point four, take away, uh, sixty-nine point six, about two hundred thousand dollar difference that you're, it professes that we're definitely extending by two hundred thousand for this year, you know, and it's unaudited. However, I asked Dr. Braggie to run the math, cause I ran it, I got the same number, I verified it with Dr. Braggie, we both ran the number, our ending fund balance based on these numbers for reserve for economic uncertainty comes to an ending fund balance of nineteen million, ninety-six thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents. From seventeen point four the year before, we're adding almost what, one and a half million dollars, one point something, almost one point six?
One point seven.
One point seven? So with that, where does the one point seven million dollars come from? My point being, if you look at your expenses, I still think you've overestimated your expenses by about one point something million because how, where do you explain the additional money in the ending fund balance? I'm not challenging you, I'm asking the question, I think you need to really look at those expenses, cause if this, taking the reserve for economic uncertainty comes to nineteen million dollars, we've increased our ending fund balance, so we can't be deficit spending for adding a million some, a million seven to our ending fund balance. So, somewhere in the expenditures that, that, cause it can't be more revenue, it has
It has to do with the categories, right?
Yeah, and, and I've, I've cautioned you about using
I understand.
What's in the audit is very different from how we have to report a SACS. It's two different reporting systems
Systems, yeah, I, I get that.
And the way we reported here is the way that we report budget, how they pick it up as a, in a financial is, I went over this, is, is not, so you're not comparing the exact same
I, I, and I, that I get you, so, and, and that I understand, but there has to be an explanation, i- if in twenty twelve thirteen, our ending fund balance was thirteen seven, thirteen fourteen is fourteen point two, fourteen fifteen is fifteen point five, fifteen sixteen, and we have a deficit spent in, between re, audited revenues to expenses, we're now at nineteen million dollars in ending fund balance.
But remember how, like for example, even when you look at that When you look at that for six, that is not your, should not be your gauge, if you want us to do a report for you based upon SACS, remember, that showed us as deficit spending ninety-two thousand dollars. We know that we did, we know that we deficit spent eight hundred and fifty-five thousand based upon how we have to report a SACS. Those two things
But that's a reporting issue, that's not
No, that's what
That's, that's a reporting issue is my point. You can't add a million seven almost to your ending fund balance and say you deficit spent. How, that's my confusion.
Could I
Please.
Could I, could I just, for example
All right.
And I'm just gonna mention one thing.
Sure.
Only one. We had a huge increase in our reserves when we sold the
The house.
Doheny House.
Correct.
That has nothing to do with our operating deficits, that has nothing to do with it, but it went into reserve, well, there are other things also that happen like that. That's part of your answer.
Right.
If you, if you want to talk about deficit spending, you ju, you look, you don't look, you don't keep looking at the bottom line saying, well, look at all these reserves we have. We had, for example, in one of, in one of the years you're talking about, we had a huge gift from the city that went in the, into there, had nothing to do with our operations.
Yeah, that was twenty eleven, approximately twenty eleven, it's accounted for in the ending, I'm talking the ending fund balance keeps on increasing. I think
Thirteen, thirteen and fourteen.
You're saying it increases despite those examples.
Well, but we also have other examples where we have a one-time cost for an oil
well, we have a floor at the Slim Jim that needs to be
That's right.
So I mean, those things
That's right.
Somewhat bounce out, but when you talk reserves to revenues that come in from the county, the state, the local, and you add that up, and then you look at your spend, it's every one of those categories go to Laco and it's, it's put into a category of fund, and there's what, twenty funds or something like that that sits there, numbers, you have numbers of the funds and that's revenue. And then you have expenses and everything, and at the end of the day, you have auditors that audit this, and when they come, and so, okay, so in this year, um we were two hundred thousand dollars down, where's that other one point six?
In our, in our last audit.
For last year, just for last year, where would our last one point seven come from? We didn't
Again, I'm not, uh, uh, the question, I know you think, I, I don't wanna sound like I'm, I'm Forrest Gump, but I don't understand it, but I really don't.
I wanna know how we, we wound up the end of the year with one point, almost seven million dollars more we ended with than we, than we started in our ending fund balance. It's like having a savings account.
You mean in
In seventeen, we ended at seventeen point four million. Assuming the estimated um unaudited actuals are correct, and when you add all these reserve for economic uncertainties, nineteen million dollars, we added like a million and a half dollars to our ending fund balance, where does that come from? That's my question. It has to come from somewhere, a- and it could be a house, but we didn't sell a house this year, it could be, you know, it could be sent from something else, it had to come from somewhere. You don't have to answer that now, could you You don't have to answer that now, could you, could you look at it?
Yes.
Get back to us next time we do this rodeo, a, a, and answer that for me?
Right, but it won't be those numbers that I'm gonna be using.
I, I don't be different, I, I know, it'll be slight, hopefully slightly.
Cause I, again, when.
Why don't you explain why it won't be, because I don't know what he's looking at, but.
Well, I know he's. He left, he left, he pulled directly from the audit, and what they, with the componentry that they put into the fund balance. That is different than what Saks picks up as the fund balance.
Do you have one twenty five in there? Or the increase?
The, no, the, well, I don't know if it's in what he's looking at, but in mine, it's only, it's, it's.
Well, you don't have. It's not in here.
It's, yeah, it's not in here.
It's not in here.
Not in there, I know that.
No, I don't know. Again, I need to look at the, cause again, we talked, with, the way that the auditor picks up things that go into.
Yeah, they use different systems, I, I, I get that.
Well, they, it, it.
For reporting purposes.
Exactly, so I will look at it in relation to, cause I know, again, we went through this at the FFST. When they were like, okay, well, the audit says you only deficit spent by ninety two thousand, I'm like, no. We deficit spent by eight, eight hundred fifty five thousand, which is not bad. I mean, I'm not saying, I mean, it's a deficit spend, but you're never gonna get right on, and I, I think that's pretty good for, you know, it's almost seventy million dollar budget. But, uh, especially doing what we're doing and all, all the machinations that we're accomplishing. So what I can do is do that, and, and track whatever growth that is based upon Saks.
And I've asked this question a number of times, I'm curious to see, cause it, it increases where that, and it could be from a home, it could be from the city, it could be from a number of sources.
Or interest.
Interest, but.
But it increased every year.
It, it increases every, so I'd be, I, I've asked this question, I'd like to know why it's increasing. Which is a good thing, I'm not complaining, believe me, I'd rather have that than, than be nineteen million in the hole, I'd rather be nineteen million to the good. So if you can get back with that answer at some point, before we, when we have our next session, I know you love me for this, but it's important, cause we need to know. I mean, we talk about what's happening with our budget, we need to know.
Okay.
Because when we do deal with the outside world, not our little universe, educational universe, and we go ahead and proffer our financial reports, those are the audited reports, that's what I'm reading, that's what the rest of the world, whether it's Standards and Per, or it's Moody's. Any place we have to represent our financials, it's based on audited actuals.
That is true.
Okay, so anyways, if you can answer that question, I'd appreciate it for next time. Thank you very much.
I understand what you asked. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Not trying to be difficult, I like to know before I get off this board in five months.
So we have two particular exercises, we need to track the, the eighteen nineteen second round projection to our current projection. And, and where those differences occurred, uh, to our proposed eighteen nineteen from our second interim eighteen nineteen. And we need to answer the reserve growth question.
Uh, and nineteen twenty.
And nineteen twenty.
And nineteen twenty.
Can I ask a very quick question, point Dr. Sturzenberg?
Yes.
Um, so in our resolution here, you noted that the Pers rates in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, or go up to twenty seven point three percent. Um, in twenty seventeen, in PowerPoint, that same rate is listed as twenty five point three percent, is this, is this just significantly outdated?
It, 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 it became that outdated in, in less than two weeks. And that's, remember when I was saying that, that this was, I loved this slide, and I wanted to use it at some point, and all of a sudden it's outdated because, uh, the Pers board up, uh, their, uh, their percentages.
I was just surprised at the fluctuation.
Yeah, no, that, well, it is, and it, it should, it, it, it.
Yeah.
Is what it is, but it absolutely, when we did the second interim, we did it at the older rate, and now there's a higher rate.
Three is today's correct rate.
Say again?
So the twenty seven point three percent is the correct rate as of today?
As of today, growth rate, is what it's expected to grow to, yes.
Are we done, or will the public ask some questions?
We're not, we haven't gotten to the big meat of it, is the fiscal stability plan, we're at six.
Oh, well, do we wanna.
Hold on one second, let me finish my presentation, please.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize.
I'm sorry, not saying please, but I wanna finish it till you get to this point, cause then that's gonna probably take up the rest of your meeting. Um, what is not in your budget that ma, that will change it, was not budgeted here, that could change it dramatically after budget submission? Um, we didn't, we were advised to not budget any one-time funds from the governor's budget. The governor budgeted three hundred and ninety five dollars per ADA that would have gone, that would go to us as a basic aid, which is about one point five million. Uh, we don't have it in the budget, uh, cause the assembly recommended one ver, another number, and the Senate recommended another number. So we don't know what we're gonna get, but there will be some one-time funds that will be put in after the fact. The addition.
Explain the ending fund balance.
Um, additional funds for CTE. Currently, we are in the last year of our CTE grant, so we're getting about a hundred and twenty five thousand from the state. We're spending about seven hundred thousand. One of our proposals to the governor, or, uh, that he did not include in his budget, but the senate and the assembly took our recommendation included in their budget, is a continuation of the CTE grant. So in nineteen twenty and on, there are no additional funds for CTE, but we have, um, we petitioned both the assembly and senate, and we were successful in getting them to add it into, um, their budget. So we'll see what comes out, the governor put all the CTE money, he feels that is either in their LCFF base, and then he took the, what was these grants, and gave it to the community colleges, and we want it to stay in K twelve, uh, as a allotment. There are no professional development funds budgeted, even though there are some, um, proposals at the legislature right now. One of the, the big things that, um, uh, we, that the governor has in his budget are new fiscal transparency tools, which we think are a total waste of time, and it's a lot of money, he has about, he has many million put in there.
Well, what are some examples, just curious?
He, uh, it's, um, in addition to your LCAP, there's a two-page template that says, that has pie charts of revenues and expenditures, how much is going to, um, the, the special populations, um, and, um, how much are going to teachers, what activities? Is, is another, uh, tra, it's another, um, report in addition to the LCAP. So we feel that you, we developed the LCAP, you developed the LCAP for us to tell you how we're spending our money as it relates to education, that doing a new fiscal transparency tool is just, as a redundancy of what you've already asked us to do.
Noah's gone?
Yeah, you know, call back in and see.
But, um, but that was.
Want me to dial him up again?
I can ask him if he's.
Ask him if he wants to join us.
Um, as you said, I don't have any money in there for, for security, um, in the current budget. Uh, any additional staffing that, other than what we've approved, is not in the budget. And then, we have no consideration in the budget in nineteen twenty and on for any JPA considerations.
I, I'm just calling Noah back for a moment, please, thank you.
Welcome, this service is provided by FreeConferenceCall.com, please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. You entered two, four, five, six, six, five, if this is correct, press one, to re-enter your access code, press two.
Is he on yet?
If this is correct, press one. You are the only participant in the conference.
So you can leave it on in case you.
He said, I'm, I'm calling back.
So this might, you might wanna, before you, which I, and we gave you a.
Will we finish this?
Yeah, we finished this.
Hello?
Hi Noah, you there?
Ken, hi.
Don't know why it hung up on you.
I think it had a time limit, cause it seemed to hang, hang out for the two hours.
Oh, so it's better than us.
So you're good for another two hours, perfect. We're at the fis. We're at the fiscal stability plan resolution.
So the, the plan submitted, or the resolution submitted to you is just a draft, we didn't want you to have to start from scratch. We took language from all different sources, I had sent you, uh, before, some samples at other school districts, uh, as a template. Um, um, again, this is the board's fiscal stability, the board's commitment to maintaining fiscal solvency. And so, it is for you to change these paragraphs upon your consensus agreement, or whatever you wanna do, we are your humble servants.
We're, we're your humble board.
But we have our moments.
I don't think anybody's humble.
Literally another country heard from, Mr. Margot's in Canada.
So, uh, this is Korbita.
Yes.
How do you want to approach this?
I think, I think we've heard, we've given a walkthrough.
Yes.
Of, of, uh, of the, of this, these projections, this proposal, if you will, and, um, so here, here's, here's the way I see it. First, first of all, I, I do need, I, I will need to see a reconciliation of, of, of the new projections for twenty nineteen and twenty. Twenty eighteen nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Um, I will need to see a reconciliation, because the numbers are usually different. And, um, but assuming, assuming for the moment that these, these new projections are valid projections. This is what I see. I see that we're projecting over a three-year period operating deficits totaling almost six million dollars, five point nine five million dollars. The beginning, the beginning reserve balance of Fund Seventeen and the general reserve add up to sixteen point three. So, this three-year decrease of about six million is about a decrease of about thirty six percent of the starting reserve. Now, I know, I know that when we, when we get into the details of security, that's closed session. But I feel that I can say this an open session. The armed guard reserves that we have discussed in the past would run somewhere at least a million and a half a year, at least, and perhaps more. If we were to do that on top of this, that million and a half over three years would be would bring the, the diminishment of reserves to about ten and a half million, or sixty four percent of what we have. So we know that we've got some work to do. I'm just saying that where we are right now on this, we know that we have some work to do. I've got ideas, but my goal, and, and, and it seems to me that what, what, what our, I would hope our goal would be since, uh, since we, uh, we need to have this fiscal stabilization plan. I would hope that we would try to have a goal that commencing with two thousand nineteen and twenty, we don't have an operating deficit, we've got a, we've got a balanced budget. And that's what I think we should be working toward. I don't know whether, for example, uh, Laco has asked for, Laco has asked us for a fiscal stabilization plan. Now, whether they would feel that over a three-year period, loss of reserves of thirty six percent would be stabilization, I don't know. It wouldn't be, from my own personal standard, it wouldn't be stabilizing. I think, what I'm trying to say is this, I think we as a board have an opportunity now. And it's because of the, of Laco's fiscal stabilization plan requirement. I think we have an opportunity now to do something on this budget that hasn't been done in years and years and years. You can go back a lot of years, lots of years, and every board, every year, has been faced with this. We gotta cut somewhere, we have to cut somewhere. And for years, boards were cutting in admin, the administrative staff, you know that. Over a period of years, our administrative staff was cut to beyond the bone. It was, and I think you know that, looking back.
I've been here since oh nine.
Okay. And that's why now, for example, it looks like when we're, when we're putting together a proper operating administrative staff, it looks like there's a huge percentage increase. It's because we came from such a depleted staff. And I guess what I'm trying to say is this, we hear this board has an opportunity to reverse all that, and to, and to come up with a balanced budget. And I hope that's what we'll do, I think we can. So, uh, and I think we're gonna have to have a meeting to follow this one to say, how can we do that, because there are ways, there are ways we can do it.
So for me, again, just to reiterate, I'd like to see, we're gonna have a discussion about the security guards and to see what those calculations look like, because I, I think they will impact the, uh, the budget for next year, and, and certainly just projecting out for three more years. Is there anything else that is not in here, I was gonna ask that, that we wanna maybe consider, that you don't see, or everything is already captured, that was my question.
We don't have anything, um, we're still in negotiations.
As far as positions, though.
Oh, okay. I know that we have a, um, we, security, in, in terms of security staffing, we have, um, some additional, um.
Yeah.
Staff.
Classified staff.
Classified staff that.
Are they in here already?
We, we.
I thought it stopped.
It, it is some in here, but not, we, we altered it because of, um, the, uh, it looked like they were, we were decreasing the lead security, but the lead security was staying. So that is, that was part of the five, so there, there needs to be, there's gonna be some additional requests for additional staffing. And then, um, can you think of anything else? We, we need some additional clerical in the ed services area that's not addressed here, um, we have, um.
You know, and, and I was looking at just the, the numbers, um, we've done a really good job of, of looking at the, the number of students in each section for next year as we roll over. And if, we have a really high number of, of grade levels that are at their class maximum. So I already know that there's going to be a lot of conversation with families moving in, that they're not going to be able to choose their homeschool. But there are some grade levels. But there are some grade levels, and Luke and I were looking at it the other day, where, I mean, it's like third grade all the way across the district. So I think we need to keep in mind that we're gonna be, we're gonna have to hire some new teachers to take care of the, the class size issue. So we have to be prepared for that. We've done a really good job of, of really maximizing our staff at the elementary level. But we're at, we're really high, you know, to that maximum at, at just about every grade level.
And I guess my other question is, have we reconciled the need for staff as we had some staff take the, you know, they've retired and some probably are not coming back for whatever reason? And so we still have a need for staffing at those levels? But have we reconciled to see, you know, who will take over, you know, can we shuffle some of them or are we gonna do that? Are we going to be pursuing hires? Because I would think that if you could save some money in those, in those, as people just naturally leave for whatever reason, maybe we, you know, have, have those numbers been captured?
They have not, really. And I'll tell you why. When, when you get the, the SERP, your prove it, they have the estimated savings. I've found that that estimated savings is not a guarantee, so I don't budget that savings. By last year or this current year, when we did that big one, I could see, okay, we're saving some money and certificate it based upon that SERP, and we reduce. But it, you, I, I don't know it until it actually sees it. Because the, the projections assume they were gonna hire a first-year teacher, step one, lowest rate. What we end up hiring may not be that. And so
You're saying sometimes they're more seasoned.
But what we have done, I'm sorry, is, and what you have before you right now, and that's, in the end, one of the things that we have to do, we're, Angelia is still working with Luke on exact 18, 19 staffing. What you have in here presupposes 17, 18 staffing, so with some modification. So we have to definitely firm up 18, 19 staffing where we're not replacing anybody. Those are easier to, to calculate those savings than when we're replacing a body. But your, your current projected 18, 19 is primarily 17, 18 staffing. That's why when I gave you those school sites, it shows 17, 18 staffing. I couldn't give you 18, 19 because it's all in paper, it's not in the system yet.
I have one more question.
Yeah, let me add on to that, Mrs. Corbita, one more thing. As I look at, at all these projections, it looks to me, and maybe I, I don't see it right, but it looks to me like these projections show that we will not have a communications officer aboard for three years.
That, that's what you have before you right now.
Right, that's what I have before me right now. And here's what I'm saying. I think, I think that that is shooting ourselves in the foot. Because this district needs to be able to communicate to the public.
So we're redesigning what that position does? And so it, it should be captured in here, so I'm glad you brought that up. But we're redesigning that so that it has a, a different job expectation?
Right. And so somehow that's gonna, I just wanted to mention that somehow that's gonna be
Yeah, I had asked about that yesterday, I think, when I saw you.
And, and it's, it's gonna be at, you know, a lower salary as well, so.
Yeah.
So I wanna now talk a little bit about something we really haven't talked about a lot, is the resolution. And on the second page, I just wanna know, since we're putting, now, I don't know to the extent of how much detail Laco is expecting from us on this resolution or what really the purpose of the exercise is in actualizing what we're saying we're going to do. So it just seems to me that the area of reconfiguration, the estimated savings targeted there are $4 million. So, you know, in looking at the documentation from the FFST and what was provided, I think there was two options to secure those savings. So are we going to go the extra step of really identifying what we mean by reconfiguration? And then if so, you know, what that timeline looks like? And if there is going to be a real timeline, wouldn't that be part of something that we would want to show in our projections if we move forward with this? So this is, I, I, it's unclear to me as to what the timeline is and what kind of reconfiguration we're looking at. And I'm just asking the board if, you know, we wanna, if, if this is on here, I think the committee deserves to know what that means and what the timeline's like and what we're actually talking about. And it seems very unclear the way it's posted right now.
So, yeah, and I, I would just say, you know, our recommendation as a, as a cabinet, you know, that, that still stands, and, and the FFST recommendation, that stands. So I think it's, it's more of a, a board discussion about, you know, what direction we wanna go.
I mean, is this something that Laco is requesting? I guess it's my first question.
When this was written, and I had talked to Don Blake
I don't, and I don't know how, you know, I just want everyone to know, like, you know, I read this yesterday, right, at eight in the morning when I received it. So I'm assuming that the staff and the cabinet put this together.
Yes.
These, these, you know
We collaborated.
This, this resolution for the board to consider, to, to, to sign off on.
Well, no, to, to, as your guide, as a template. I expected it, you to, to massage it, because it's your resolution. We just didn't want you to start from zero.
But if we're, if we're saying reconfiguration on here, then I wanna know, I mean, if we're gonna be held accountable to, for this, for this little line right here, then I think we need to be clear what that means.
And I, I think it would be, I, I don't know if the staff wants to add anything, but I think it would be prudent for us to hold ourselves to a timeline of this.
It would be prudent?
I think we should, because
Right, because we're being, I mean, or else what is the purpose of the exercise? And it needs to be reexplained to me. If that's not really something that Laco is pursuing for us to, to have, to, to do, then I guess I question why is this here?
And, and I think it's not just, it's not only beneficial for the purposes of submitting this to Laco, but it's beneficial for us and for our ultimate implementation. Because part of any successful reconfiguration will have to involve a significant amount of time and planning and making sure we implement it right. And I think part of the issue we saw this past year when we were looking at a potential reconfiguration was, you know, it's getting to March, you know, and we, we don't have time to do anything anymore. Um, I think we should hold ourselves, I would say, hopefully, till the end, you know, by, by the end of summer. I think we should have a reconfiguration plan voted on. We can take a year to get it right. Um, but I, I think that, you know, if, if we put a timeline in our submission to Laco, that it kind of holds ourselves to something that's, you know, in the power of another entity and it gives ourselves a timeline to work with.
So I guess my question is for Dr. Bregge, what, what were you kind of visualizing when you put this on here? Or somebody?
I, I mean, we collaboratively did. One of the things that, at the time that it was put on here, I talked to Don Blake, and I said, okay, Don, can we reconfigure right now? And he's like, you couldn't reconfigure right this minute because you don't have any money and you don't have a plan. And so, um, we now have the money because we were successful with BH. And it would be up to them to draw, you know, based upon what we came out of the FFST, even if we did like the first, let's say, 3K8, then we would talk about how many classrooms had to remodel, what types of plans had to be submitted to DSA, what classrooms had, in terms of remodel for restrooms, smaller-sized kids, or, you know, middle school classes with more science stations and things like that. And then we can have a better feel, because that construction component is, is, or the remodel component, it's not a full construction, but it is a remodel. But that remodel does go before DSA, and, and needs a cost put to it. And, but again, at thi, at this writing, it was, we know we wanna do it. We just didn't know if we could do, when we could do it and how we could do it. But I, we're, I think, again, we're your, whatever you say is what we're gonna do if we
And, and if you remember the, the last conversation we had publicly, because we don't get to meet very often, is that, that the board had sent the cabinet questions. And there were some really good questions that were sent, and very thorough questions. And in full disclosure, we just have not had a chance to get to the reconfiguration questions again. A lot of them, we, we have some of the information, but, you know, there's some additional data that the board has asked for that I wanna make sure that we, that we get you. One of the things that we're starting in the next week is to, is to actually start mapping out what some of the board has asked for, like classroom utilization. What does it look like for, you know, a middle school? Or the 3K8s? Where will classrooms be? How many kids will be in them? So that's, as I mentioned at one of the meetings, doing, you know, master schedule takes months to do. And so we're going to, you know, change that process up a little bit. But we wanna be able to, to illustrate to you on, on some, you know, poster-sized papers so that you can kind of get an overview of like, you know, just what the programs look like in each building and how many students would be there, how many teachers. And that's one of our many summer projects that we're working on.
So again, just to
Sure, of course, no, let me, sorry.
Yeah, if you were still going, Mr. Hacker, you go ahead and finish.
Well, I guess, maybe you're gonna say the same thing I'm gonna say, but I don't know. I'll just finish my thought. For reconfiguration, again, I just wanna know, if this is on here, to what extent, what is Laco looking for? Are they looking for dates? Are they gonna come back and say, hey, you know, you put this as part of your resolution? So you're being held accountable? Sorry? Did you have, did you, do you wanna add something?
Yeah, I do. Based on, based on a number of exemplars, the ones that Ms. Kirk Carter gave us and ones that I saw online. They don't look for much, most of those are one-page. This is kind of what we're doing. We're much more comprehensive than I think any of the exemplars.
Well, I wasn't in that meeting, so I guess I'm trying to understand
I wasn't in that meeting.
The, the meeting with Laco.
Oh, oh.
What, what were they, where were they looking? I mean, are they going to, at some point, say, you know, you've, you've now, you've, you've told us that you're gonna reconfigure, so give us a timeline? Do we, I mean, and if it's not, then I'm, I'm kind of wondering why are we putting this in there? And I'm not trying to get away from reconfiguration, I'm just trying to understand, how accountable are we going to be if we submit this to Laco?
You're accountable to yourself.
And then your, your budget has obviously changed from when you had your meeting with Laco. So I'm wondering, did anyone put out a call to Laco and say, our position has changed financially? Do you still want this?
I didn't, and I felt like it would be insolent to do so, since they asked us to do it, to just go on and do it. But Laco wants you to rec, they're not gonna hold you to, they're not expecting you to have a timeline. If you looked at those, the samples that they sent me, they're asking you as a governing board to acknowledge declining revenue, declining reserves, or stabilizing your expenses.
Not declining revenue, I think, we don't wanna decline revenue.
I'm sorry.
No, but those are, those are from other resolutions that, that other districts pass, that Laco has accepted, far less detailed
Than what we've done.
than what you're proposing to us, or you're, you're asking the board to look at anyways.
In many cases, uh, uh, Ms. Hacker, the administration can look, look at a budget and they're not articulating it to their board, that they're in financial trouble and the board doesn't know it until the financial trouble is upon them. They're not asking, they're, they're, they're putting their head in the sand or saving their jobs, as it were, and not doing the hard work. And so that's, the, if, if you notice, these fiscal stability plans are new on the horizon, are, are new to the scene. Before 16, 17, I had never even heard of it. And so this is another, more of a transparency tool of, of making sure that administration has the board acknowledge what it sees in its budget. It's not asking, that's why we have so many things here and it's globulous, but it's like, they're wanting you to look at it. They want us to, which we did this year, and they saw that, that's why. But they wanna make sure that we're, that as a, a community, as a board, that we're continually looking at our expenditures and how we're spending our money.
One quick thing, Latonya, I know when we met with him, they were worried about the Karen Christians.
Oh, yeah, they were very worried.
And now that that's lifted, and so are we. And now that that's lifted, and we even got further good news today, that what they asked for, they didn't receive the other side from the court. So the point is, is that that may have been one of the reasons they prompted to come, you know, to ask for this FSP. I'm not saying we're out of the woods, I'm just saying that's a massive thing lifted from us, which was a $22 million liability compounding with interest, that lawsuit, that, that judgment.
And also passing the bond because they were concerned about our oil field, it's not just a well remediation at what our cost, the city's kicking in four, our cost would have been $14 million in the next two years. That would upside down us, that would have eaten up whatever our ending fund balance is. We wouldn't have been there without that bond passing last night.
Oh, okay, I'd like to time in, I've been trying for a very long time.
Yes, yes, talk to him.
I, so for me, the resolution is, is more than sufficient at this point, and I think it needs to go to Laco, um, once it's voted on by us, and let them say to us, no, we'd like a little more detail. I like the flexibility built in to say, hey, we are committed to some sort of reconfiguration. There is just not enough detail on the table at this time to pick which option or what other new options that this district is going to commit to in whatever timeframe that staff comes back, if facility comes back and says, okay, here's what we can do. So I think if it's acceptable to Laco, it's more than acceptable to me.
All right, you done with Hacker?
Yeah.
Noah, do you have anything more you wanna add, or you can speak after Howard?
Well, you can, if you want to.
You wanna continue?
No, no, that's, that's, no, that's my feeling on the resolution on, on this topic. As far as Mr. Spitz's, um, attempts to want to set the budget straight as soon as possible, I think that that kind of plays hand in hand with everything else we're juggling at the moment. I think that in light of the new kind of approach to budgeting that we're going to take from this point on, we may have a clearer picture earlier on on how to manage our expenditures and watch, watch the purchase orders and the reserves, um, so we don't always fall back into this cycle. So if we can, if this was an opportunity for us to break that vicious cycle, perhaps then it'll be easier for us to move forward with, with less deficit or forecasted spending, you know, from this point on.
Howard?
Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. Spitz, I wanna address a comment you made. And I think there's a fallacy to your logic historically. I'm not saying you're making anything up, I just think there's a fallacy giving the historical financial reports. We approved a budget for 2017, 18 that had a $5 million deficit projected. And Ms. Kirk Carter's gone out of her way to explain the difference of a projection versus a forecast, because that projection was not essentially adequate. And to Ms. Kirk Carter's credit, she's identified the reasons why. One, we knew, and it's something I said all the time, that we underestimated revenues. Well, that's the easy one, we know that. Overestimating expenses was much more difficult. That's a process that the business office has to undertake, and they failed to do that. They failed to do that in 2017, 18, and it showed a $5 million deficit. We don't have a $5 million deficit. In 2016, 17, it also showed almost, I think, $4.8 million deficit. We didn't wind up with a $4.8 million deficit. In 2015, 16, it showed, I believe, it was somewhere around a $4 million operating budget deficit. We didn't wind up with an operating deficit, we wound up with $2 million to the good. And since I've been on this board, every budget we passed showed a budget projected deficit that never arose because, at the end of the day, when we finally put all the beans in one pile and counted the beans in the other pile, it balanced out and we were actually to the good. And we kept on, for whatever the reasons, and I hope to find out this year, because every year's a little different, why we add to our ending fund balance. When I got on this board in 2014, our ending fund balance was $15.5 million. It's now $19 million. In that time since 2014, we have built some of the largest programs this district has seen with regard to CTE. We pre-funded OPEF. We had a, a GATE pro, we have a GATE program. We even approved intervention one year. We did one-to-one technology, we did a lot of technology in this. That all costs a lot of money, millions and millions of dollars of expenditures that we grew programs at the same time we were projecting budget deficits that never came to be. So historically, I don't buy into the, down the road, three years projected down the road, we're gonna be 36% upside down or, or cut into it, because it doesn't materialize. I think we're gonna be just fine if we continue to do what Ms. Kirk Carter indicates. That has to be done, something I talked about last year, the year before that, when I was a board president. When I first got on this board, it's finally good to see it finally happen. I hope you actually do it. When I'm not on this board, that you, Mr. Spitz, Ms. Hacker, Mr. Margot, hold Dr. Bregge, Ms. Kirk Carter's feet to the fire to make sure they continue to do this. Because what happens is, it makes it very difficult for a board to say, hey, when administrators come to us, educators come to us and say, hey, everybody has a want. And we have to ascertain what those needs are. And not to have the money available when the teachers have a, when our students have a need and say, we don't have it there, because over the years it's been tied up. We've been fortunate that the boards, and including yourself, Mr. Spitz and Ms. Hacker, we voted for programs. Rightfully so, 'cause they were important to those students in this district. Um, one thing I do want to make clear, although we do have an ending fund balance of nineteen million, we, and this is, Mr. Spitz is correct about, and I say too, although, Mr. Spitz, you may say we have a deficit, we're deficit budgeting, we're treading water. If you look at our revenue to expense the last few years, we've been growing programs and that's a good thing, but we are treading water, okay? It's not going to be sustainable because of pirs and stirs and other, and step and column, we have to recognize that. Our labor partners come to us and say, hey, we're flush with cash, whatever that means. And, and maybe they're referring to ending fund balance and that would be accurate. But we're not flushing cash from the standpoint that year in, year out, we're, we're, we're getting millions and millions of dollars. Money's coming from somewhere and as Mr. Spitz indicated, maybe it's a one-time fee. And there's always a one-time fee. Since I've been on this board or watching this board for twenty years, there's always been some one-time money. But there may be a day that one-time money doesn't come. Or there may be a day we have a major expenditure that we didn't foresee, that, that cuts into this. We may decide we're going to do security at X millions of dollars for the next few years until we reconfigure and that comes out of our reserve. So be it, that's where the reserve, that's what it's for. So with all that in mind, I, I, I just believe there's a fallacy to the logic. Not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying that because we're, your statement's based on projection versus what we see happening and going to happen. And we know, you know, I won't be here, but the next board, I think, would, because Dr. Breggy is in favor of it, our administrators seem to be in favor, our educators be in the favor. And even so, we're in favor of it. When we did the FFST, I was a board member, there was a comment that you had made publicly that nobody on this board wanted to reconfigure. That, there was an editorial, an article in the paper saying that you were the only one that wanted to reconfigure. I wanted to reconfigure too. I wanted to follow School Services of California report in twenty seventeen, the FFST report, uh, recommendations and Dr. Breggy's recommendations of going to three K eights and then a dedicated middle school at some point. So I did want to reconfigure. Whatever the next board's gonna do, I think this community now understands that our model isn't sustainable four K eights, that there has to be a reconfiguration. What that looks like, it'll be incumbent on Mr. Margot, Ms. Hacker, Mr. Spitz and two other board members, some that may be sitting in this room, to go ahead and figure out what that looks like. And God bless you for doing it, because it's essential for the delivery, quality delivery of education for our students. So there's my little diatribe speech today, thank you for listening. I know I have a choice of school districts, thanks for picking the BHUSD.
Isabel brought this to my attention, thank you. So I know we have to talk about security and we're gonna have to talk about a calendar date. Um, what do you mean by additional staffing and why is JPA listed here?
On page twenty-five, I don't think we discussed.
That's what I was asking, we hadn't finished our sheet.
Because the JPA isn't bud, even though we're not budgeted past nineteen twenty, we ha, and we have no money in the budget for, we, we have, that, that's a consideration, that, I think that's in my last.
So, uh, when you say. When is the contract over? Twenty nineteen?
Nineteen twenty.
Then why don't you have the money in there?
It is in there.
It is in there.
It ends in nineteen twenty, any new growth in JPA ends.
Okay, but the way you wrote it here, it's as if it's not there.
Oh, no, it's there.
Okay, okay. What about additional staffing?
Any additional staffing, other than what I've already reflected here, and the additional staffing that is, was unbudgeted, and any other staffing that you need is not in here.
So then what is not captured here is the communications piece?
And other, like I said.
Others.
There's a few others?
A few others, that are not here.
Well, I'd like to know what those are, because that could be like a million dollars very quickly.
Well, we're not, we can't add them until, approve them, till you approve them. And I say approve, we're not, nothing would be added to, without your approval, those are just.
You're leaving this out basically as a question mark.
Yeah, these are just considerations.
But we would know that because we would greenlight it.
Right, and all of this is going, so for, for example, if you are, um, I'm talking about if you approve the budget as, whatever we submit, I already know that if we get one-time money, it's not gonna be in the budget. That's why I said, one-time money is not budgeted. I know we're gonna get some, but.
So you're saying these are all the things that are outside the budget at this time?
Right.
Are they additional, the one-time?
It, it could be like additional, um, teachers at a specific grade level.
But why is JPA not, why is the nineteen twenty JPA not in the budget?
It is in the budget.
But it's listed here as.
Nineteen twenty is the last year.
It's the last year.
All right, I got it, okay.
And then what about the CTE, you had that in there, additional funds or CTE? Were they requesting more, more funds?
No, we have.
Our portion, repeat more.
We have the grant, which is on the hundred twenty-five K.
How it tapers off?
But we knew that.
So in the budget, the further years.
Do you have that captured, 'cause that's a commitment.
Yeah, it, yes, it is, it's, in eighteen nineteen, we have the hundred twenty-five dollar, hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant plus the full expenditure of seven hundred K. In nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one, we have no revenue, just the expenditure.
Right.
But we know that the Senate and Assembly have proffered additional funds. The governor has proffered zero, so nothing's in there in those two succeeding years. But if it were to come to pass, then when you see, there will be additional money in that area.
Got it.
And there's a huge push, you know, it's down the road, so there's a huge push from school districts all across California.
For a CTE, for to restore funding.
Okay, hold on.
So it's, it's hard to say where it is.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we account for that though, if you put no money in there, or you did?
I put no revenue in there, but I put the expenditure.
She put all the expenditures, she's saying the only news ended up is good news.
'Cause that's guaranteed. You don't forget.
Unless you, unless you closed them, which I doubt very seriously that you are, the expenditure is there. There's no additional revenue for that.
Yeah, and CTE, don't forget, that was an upfront grant of six hundred something thousand that we had to run it for six years to get that money.
I understand, there was a commitment.
Right, exactly.
And, and it's a trade-off too, though, because it's, those students have to go somewhere. So we're gonna spend it in CTE.
Right, if you go to CTE, you're sending it in electives.
It's a half, right.
One of the things that. And you will get subsidized for additional electives.
And you get A through, and you've read in a lot of those CTE boards, I suppose.
Okay, Latonya, we're at page twenty-seven, I believe, that's the end of your presentation? Okay.
Do we have any direction on the F, do we wanna meet again on the resolution?
Well, I'm, I'm okay to accept this resolution, it's far more detailed than the one you have. When it comes to the reconfiguration part, my position was and is today that, um, you need to do a head count, you need to look at space, you need to look at programming in those buildings. I think it's, um, you know, a fool's errand to think that you're going to create a middle school when one school's ripped up, the high school's ripped up and Hawthorne is a hundred years old. I just don't, you know, I don't see the wisdom in that, I just don't. So I won't be here.
I, I don't agree with that.
I know you don't, Mr. Spitz, I read about that in the Courier, thank you. I, I, I read about it, I read it twice.
What differ, let me ask you a question. What difference does it make, for example, if we were gonna go to a middle school? And let's say that was, that, that will, that will have a few, a smaller number of students at each of the other schools. So you're saying, well, right now, El Rodeo.
No, I'm talking about, okay, Mr. Spitz.
Right now, El Rodeo is.
I didn't tell you I'm for a middle school, I said to you, for reconfiguration, I was, I was thinking of three K eights. I think that's not, that's not workable. I am not for a dedicated middle school for the simple reason that BV is not built out as a middle school. I think doing it this way is haphazard, but more than that, I actually like the idea of a seven twelve. And I like the idea of us looking deeply and, and comprehensively at this building site, which is one acre, yes, it's one acre, and to look how you could put seven, eight here, how you could build new building, parking and all kinds of wonderful facilities in here.
When, when would that happen? Tell me about the timelines or something.
That would happen probably, um, if it was looked at very closely. I would have to ask Don Blake, I would think in, within five years, you could do that.
Would it even be possible to have viable plans on the table for a seven twelve in the next year? Because I think.
I, I think, we, yeah, I mean, I think, Dr. Breggy, I've asked Don Blake and I didn't have the heart to keep bugging him because he's, you know, up to his eyeballs in work.
He is now.
He is now. But we really need an assessment of this property here and is it viable? And the reason I like that, Mr. Spitz, is there's less transitions for the kids. Being here across the street from the high school feels like you're almost part of the high school, but you're not. And you are in the most positive reassuring ways, but not in the ways that make parents, uh, concerned about fraternizing between populations.
I don't think that that's the least bit practical. You're talking about two grades of kids.
That's what they're doing at the most elite private schools, Mr. Spitz.
Let me tell you something, there's not an acre buildable here on this property. There's about, there's, there's between half and two-thirds of an acre buildable, 'cause it comes to a point. And I'm telling you that you can talk about this all you want, you're not talking about anything that's the least bit practical.
Okay, so, Mr. Spitz, I appreciate your, um, your experience and your reality check when it comes to all things numbers, although I disagree with you and I always have, that we're five million upside down, I've never believed it and it's never come to pass. However, when it comes to massing and, 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 and building out a property, I'm gonna defer to the experts. And that would be someone like Mr. Blake and some architects of his who would like to help him. I believe that that is, if, if I were to model our school district, we're not competing against Culver City Unified. You're competing against the most highest performing schools across this country, not only in our state or in our city, but across the world. And so when you look at certain priv- private schools, they're almost entirely seven twelve. So there must be something going on there. And the campuses are a little bit apart, like Harvard Wesley. And I'm just looking at that as a much better model than a dedicated middle school where parents are driving kids in all these different directions in this traffic. You didn't do traffic studies at Beverly Vista, you didn't do programming versus square footage in Beverly Vista. You, you, your bathrooms don't all fit middle school, your auditorium, your cafeteria. I mean, this is, this is, you know, pulling something, uh, you know, by the seat of your pants. I, I just don't think that's good planning. Now, I may end up being wrong and the three of you or five of you down the road, when we're not here, can go ahead and do that, that's your pocket. I just think you should look at a seven twelve till you go down a dedicated middle school path.
Can I make an inquiry? And I think Dr. Breggy touched on it. When we concluded the FFSD and we circled back to it and whether we were gonna do another committee or just ask questions, and we decided we were gonna all ask questions of the, of Dr. Breggy and his staff.
But we need to know from Don Blake.
Did I finish?
Yeah.
Thank you.
First time I've spoken, Howard, so.
Well, fair enough, although you have your moments. Um, so we all proffered questions to Dr. Breggy. And I think you touched on it, because of the questions that were asked of you, and I don't know what other board members asked, you will know all, what we all asked. You had kind of indicated earlier today that that's gonna take several months to get back to us, is that accurate? I mean, what is your timeframe? Not like you're not running a school district in between.
So, I mean, what, what I haven't done is, you know, like, looked for the common themes within question, I just took all the questions and really threw them into a Google Doc. So I, you know, and I'll share those back out with you, so you know what each other asked, but, um, so it's, it's hard to say. We, we have some of that information, um, some of the other information is, will, will take.